Here we go. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Armist Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, whatever your preference is, of September 27th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first order of business is announcements. Anybody have any public announcements? No? Okay, we'll go to public comments then. Vida Morris, why am I not surprised?
I'm the only one, so I can have all 15 minutes or whatever.
I saw, I saw some other hands back there, and I think it's only because you said that.
Anyway. Okay, I understand that a new, the new committee is coming into being here in town, and that put me in mind of one of my favorite topics, consultants. We seem to have an abundance of them apparently now, and I hope that, I'll ask you what the process is for getting a consultant appointed or hired, I guess. But, yeah, I'll be the first one to say that there are instances where such people are needed, and in the last, the last two that I'm aware of, we've had very good people, and that those being in the selection, the guiding and the selection of the new chief and the airport situation. Unfortunately, the airport situation never had anybody here in town who represented us on the, I guess it's the Airport Commissioner or something or another that Barnstable had, we worked with Barnstable, or we were supposed to, and who were never able to properly represent the town of Yarmouth, I think, because it turns out that you need people with some expertise, as this consultant seems to have, and so I think obviously, you know, the people are needed in those positions. On the other hand, the drive-in situation. They, they had a consultant who proceeded to recommend, what was it, a $10 million boardwalk in the path of hurricanes, among other things, and I, you know, actually, isn't it time to get an update on the, what's going on with the drive-in situation? Because, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those things that, that I think we need, we need to to get a handle on, you know, in terms of consultants period, so let me ask you this. What is the process of hiring a consultant? Let's just say this new committee puts it in their heads that they want a consultant. What would happen? Can somebody answer that?
Well, I don't, I don't think we're in a position to be answering questions. It's not on the agenda, but if you, you've posed the question, I think we could certainly try to have an answer for you next week.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's not, in other words, is it something that, you know, the committee would have to approach this board or something and say, this is what we want to do, and, and can we do it, and is there money available, whatever, you know, that kind of thing, that's all I wanted. In terms of, you know, that they don't just have leeway as a committee without saying anything to anybody, start hiring consultants. That, that's, that's the kind of thing that I was driving at, okay?
You need to have a budget.
I'm sorry?
You need to have funds and approvals.
Well, yeah, okay, so they would have to come here, right, to this, okay. Now, a slightly different topic. I, I was really very surprised when the Economic Development Committee announced that several members of this board were the ones who approached and asked them to look into the possibility of some kind of business arrangements for marijuana. I mean, that, this is honestly, I, I just can't believe that anybody from, what, what's going on with narcotics and, and what have you, and it's now been pretty much determined that marijuana is a gateway drug to harder, you know, narcotics, and, and when you take a look, look, what happened in California last week, they announced that mafia types entered into the business, especially, this was the growing business, and, and the mafia were not the old-fashioned type, I mean, apparently there were new ones, possibly involving illegal aliens and what have you, and, and they don't particularly, you know, follow some of the rules and what have you, but anyway, I just, I wish that the, the people who suggested, you know, that such a thing, a time and effort be spent on something like that by the Economic Development Committee would now find it in their hearts to, to ask and withdraw the whole thing and give them, you know, the opportunity to use the time and effort on really finding appropriate businesses for this town.
Thank you, Vida. Who's next? I saw a couple of hands.
Want a liquor license here?
Sure. Identify yourself, please.
Chris George, resident. Well, I'd like to submit a public comment on behalf of an application for a liquor license that's being heard tonight. I'm in a butter. I got a letter in the mail alerting me that portion of the just picked, I believe.
You have a comment on the issuance of the license?
Yes, favorably.
Okay, so you'll be recognized during the license hearing. You have a right to, you're in a butter, you said?
Correct.
You'll have a right to speak either in favor or opposition to your license at that time. I don't have any problem with you speaking now, but it'll be redundant, because I'll still call on you.
Okay.
And as a class of people, you know, anyone that wants to support the application or oppose it, whether you speak now or not, I will call on that group again.
So my opining may be unnecessary.
So why don't you hold it?
Okay, thank you.
And we'll recognize you at that time.
There's a hand on the Zoom.
Huh?
There's a hand on the Zoom. Nope, it's gone now.
Hand where?
Somebody on Zoom had their hand up.
On the Zoom? Is there anybody in the audience that wants to be recognized? You gonna speak at the licensing hearing? At the parking? Okay. Who's on the screen that wants to be recognized?
They dropped their hand, so maybe they don't want to be. It's Greg Smith.
Is there anybody there?
No hands up.
No?
No.
Okay, if they come in, we'll accommodate them. All right. So we're ready, I guess, to go to the public hearing. So there's a person that is seeking the license, want to come up to the front here? Why don't you come up front? Whoever's involved in this. Both the stockholders, I noticed we have a 50-50 distribution on the stock, okay, so why don't you identify yourselves, and then what I'll do is I'll read the public notice for the record, and then we'll go forward at that point.
My name is Adam Dunn, and this is.
Erica Dunn.
Okay, Adam and Erica, okay. Okay. The Board of Selectmen, acting as a local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application for a new annual wine and malt package store license from Willow Street Wine, Inc., doing business as Dunn and Sons. 13 Willow Street, Yarmouth Port, Mass. 02675. Adam Dunn, manager. The premises comprised of 2,100 square feet with one entrance/exit facing Willow Street. There are four windows on a single floor, a single-story floor. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 27th, at Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, September 23rd, 2022, in the selectmen's office at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to public comment at yarmouth.ma.us. Now, before you go on, and I, I'm not gonna read it into the record yet, but we did get one email from Susan Starkey with an address of, Albert, Albert and Susan Starkey, at 55 Route 6A, Yarmouth Port. Did we get any other written comments? I just want to have them lined up, so we make sure we get everything. We got two more? Okay, and then we got September 14th correspondence from Andrew and Erin Maker. They are butters to 13 Willow Street. And then we got one from Bob and Judy Lorette, L-O-R-E-T-T-E, 83 Main Street in Yarmouth Port. And that's it for written input, okay. So why don't you tell us, make a short presentation about what it is that you have planned for this location. I, I have read the written materials, you don't have to go through all that, most checklists or anything. And then we'll go to the public, and then we'll see what questions or comments the individual board members have, and then ultimately, we will make a decision on this application.
So, yep, I'm Adam, this is Erica. We are proprietors of a restaurant in Dennis called The Pheasant, 95 Route 6A, formerly The Red Pheasant. We are looking to open a specialty fine wine store at 13 Willow Street, under the name Dunn and Sons. The concept of the store is to provide a unique retail experience on Cape Cod, where staff, a staff of wine professionals actively support and guide guests in their shopping experience, providing expert service and attention to each guest at whatever level, experience, and price point they might be interested in. We want to use our wine knowledge to make great wine more accessible, and doing so in a fun and approachable manner. The types of wine we plan to feature will primarily come from small producers with an emphasis on sustainable farming practices, most of which being organic and/or biodynamic, and minimal intervention in the cellar and winemaking process. These are wines not typically found in surrounding stores or markets, and some of them are only available in the state of Massachusetts in incredibly small quantities. The selection offered will be, will showcase exciting new producers, both domestic and international, as well as world-renowned benchmark producers from all over. In addition to wine, we plan to offer accessories like glassware, corkscrews, small coolers, books, and the like, maybe even carry a small selection of shelf-stable food items, high-quality Tennessee food, crackers, condiments, things like that. In addition to retail, the retail wine sales, we plan to offer classes in the space and have it as something of an education and community space. We'd like to be able to host winemakers, importers, distributors on occasion, invite the community in. The Cape is not exactly on everyone's roadmap when visiting the United States, especially some of these winemakers and people like that, that usually skip the region and go to New York, Boston, Providence, but it'd be great to be able to have them come out to the Cape and engage with, you know, a market out here. We plan to operate the business in the high season, seven days a week. We're thinking 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM is probably what we'd like to do. We imagine that those hours and days would probably come down in the off-season, that's all dependent on staff and, and the business, what the business demands. We have no intention of selling beer at this establishment. It's really not in the business model. We're really focused on this kind of high-quality wine at a number of different price points, too, so there should be accessibility for everybody who's interested in learning more and engaging more in wine, and it's really a specialty-type business. We're putting together a staff of wine experts, former sommeliers from New York City and Boston and things like that, other people who work in restaurants on the Cape that are really interested in engaged in wine and, and selling wine to, to guests on a regular basis, so it's quite a bit different than your typical package store in the area.
Okay, thank you. Why don't I get the public, the written commentary into the records? Well, I'm thinking about it. I'll go with the earliest date first. So the first one would be on the 14th, which is Andrew and Erin Maker. They say they are butters to 13 Willow Street, and they received notice of this petition. They, they're writing to lend their full support to the application, and they urge the town to grant the license. They said that The Pheasant Restaurant has flourished under Adam's stewardship and become one of our favorite dining establishments on Cape Cod, and that you're a respected business owner and an involved member of the community. Is this like your grandmother or something?
I should say Erica and I both run the business together.
We, we believe the new venture in Yarmouth Port will be a wonderful complement to our vibrant Main Street business district. So that's pretty much what that one says. And then Susan Starkey's correspondence is dated September 16th to the board. And she says she's grateful that the owners of this proposed store sent notice to her. And our home is directly next door to the Just Pick Store in the building that will become the wine store. Please let me know if this letter will be given to Adam Dunn and the management team. Have you seen this?
No.
Oh, so my answer is I don't know yet. From what I understand, my husband and I welcome a good neighbor and the new store. There is adequate parking, and the other businesses at the property are easy to communicate with. She's unable to, they are unable, Albert and Susan, are unable to attend this hearing, but would welcome a phone call from Adam or other staff. And what I, she has some things she wants to say to you, which I really, I-
I think I did see this letter.
Okay.
And-
Where she talked about ever-source utility confusion, and you saw that?
Yeah, we saw that, and I-
So that really, these are like individual things she would like to talk to you about, which I'm not real sure are germane to this issue that's before the board, but she does, she does freely give her contact information, and if you want to copy this letter, because she's obviously expressed a willingness to talk to you about some items, it's, it's freely available. The third piece of correspondence is from Bob and Judy Lorette, and that is dated September 22nd. And they expressed their enthusiastic support for the license. They were first concerned about having a package store locating two doors down for their home of 19 years, but all of their concerns were addressed when speaking with Adam last week, and with a writing he provided to us this week summarizing his plans for the license. Given the rights inherent in the issuance of a wine and malt license, we were concerned about having a package store offering products and having, and appear it's typical of a convenience store, especially during late night hours. Adam made it very clear to us that such a scenario was the farthest thing from his and Erica's mind. Instead, he and Erica planned an upscale wine shop, which we described with limited product offerings and an appearance consistent with that upscale image. Equally important, he ensured us that as a general manager, the shop would not extend beyond 8:00 PM in season and not beyond 7:00 during the off-season. Well, you really didn't say that, you said possibly.
It's gonna dictate what the, what, you know-
As a result, Judy and I believe such a shop would be an excellent addition to our small village, and we heartily recommend the approval of this application. So that's the written correspondence. Now, does anybody in the public want to be heard on this? Let me have a show of hands, so I know how many people. About four. Are any of you people that wrote these letters? No? Okay. Ma'am, why don't you go first? Identify yourself, let us know where you live in proximity to the arm location, and what your concerns are, or what your support is.
Sure. My name is Anne Hill. I live two doors up from the Just Pick Store, and also the site where the wine shop will be. I'm neighbors to Susan and Albert Starkey, good neighbors. I, I too am in favor of the wine shop, thanks to that statement that Adam and Erica wrote about what they're gonna do in there and their aims and objectives, which was a pleasure to read. I do still, though, have, having said that, I do still wonder and have some reservations about the increase in traffic that a successful shop might bring to that location. As many of you know, if you have ever been on Willow Street, there's, until very late at night, and even into the night, there is a, a lot of traffic that reflects its location on the intersection of 6A, or it intersects with 6A right in front of Just Pick. And my concerns have always been about the noise and the litter and just the sheer number of cars that use that particular intersection. And I have no hard data on this, but my personal impression is that that has gotten worse in the few years that we have lived in that location. Motorcycles especially have been added to the mix and are extremely annoyingly loud. Now, I understand that this is beyond their control, and, but it's not beyond your control. And I am hoping that at some point, the Select Board can look at that particular intersection and think about alternatives to just a rather conventional road that pelts down toward 6A on one side and zooms up on the other, and that's where we get the revving of many kinds of engines, but especially motorcycles. So I'm, I'm hoping that in the future, you can have a, a broader perspective on, or some attention to that particular problem there, and consider alternatives like bike paths, road diets, and so forth, that would cut down on some of the traffic there. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Name?
Diana Braggington-Smith. Is it possible to comment on this, and then the other thing as well? Okay, just want to make sure I don't use my ticket. Not that I wouldn't for you, but I live right on Railroad Ave, so I live directly around the corner.
Okay.
These guys, or the intended location. I have a question. Do you intend to sell Nips?
The license is only one-
No, he can't sell. He's applying, he's not applying for a full liquor license.
Okay, that's good. That would be my only concern. I'm an anti-nipper, but-
I think you have a lot of followers.
I clean the streets, so, as long, you know, that's a big thing, so I really appreciate that. And they have a good amount of parking at that location, so I, that wouldn't be, you know, an issue with people parking unsafely around that corner, I don't think. I like the way it sounds, what you're talking about, and, and it sounds like a place that would hopefully create or, or, or add to, lend to the good spirit of community and cooperation and, and fun that the Yarmouth Port has always been known for, so I would support it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Greg Bilazek, and I own Just Pick F's, and I live on Warf Lane, and I also own the property. I'm in support of Dunn and Sons. The retail environment's changing dramatically. We're finding a lot more traction in made-in-the-U.S.A. product. Food and consumables are a much more important part of the consumer's appetite today, so we will have made-in-the-U.S.A. products, have a better shopping experience. We'll continually move away from Chinese imports and evolve this location to be much more meaningful than it is today, so thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Anthony Ponbianco, I live at 7 Minden Lane in Yarmouth Port, and I'm a direct butter to Greg's business at Lighthouse Keeper's Pantry, and I can speak both on behalf of the ownership of that and Adam and Erica's stewardship as community leaders and community members. I'm strongly in favor of their request here tonight, and I can say that as a neighbor to Greg's other business in Yarmouth Port, it's wonderful to have him as a neighbor. He's been excellent in all capacities, and I know that that would continue on with this business that Adam and Erica are trying to do here, if there's any concerns about the, the ownership, and that is relative to the business. But Adam and Erica have been community leaders, both in The Pheasant and in Little Neck, the store that Erica runs for clothing for young children. They have been true ambassadors of, of the community in Dennis that they have, and Yarmouth Port would be lucky to have them as neighbors, as business owners there. They take care of every individual. They are full-access individuals, meaning if there are any questions that you ever have, they're available at all hours for emails, for telephone calls. They have just been wonderful people to have in Cape Cod, and it would be wonderful to have them branch out into our community here in Yarmouth, so I'm in strong favor of them coming here to our town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Hello, I'm Gianna Jonas. I've been a resident of Yarmouth for all over 30 years. I live on 2 Wilson Road, so I do not live close by, but I just wanted to lend my support tonight, and as, you know, a younger voice for the community, that we really do need more interesting, attractive things to broaden the Cape and specifically the town of Yarmouth. So I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Gentleman in the back that wanted to speak at public comment? See what it was well worth waiting for. You got to hear all these people, too.
Yes, and I'm pretty much gonna echo the same. I'm a budding neighbor across 6A from the parking lot, and I'm in support of the new wine shop that they wish to put there. My wife has worked with Erica in a capacity with one of her businesses and recommends their business as community-oriented, and she couldn't be here tonight. And I think that a shop, which is with as much care as they say is going into the curation of the product to the consumer, will strengthen the Village of Yarmouth Port, as there, I think in the last few years have been some more food businesses opening. I think it will go well in the mix of the businesses that are locally in Yarmouth Port at this time.
Thank you. Bob, even though he's indicated like earlier hours, is there like a minimum on the hours that we have to grant on a, on a package store license? I know most of them typically are 11, and then it's up to the proprietors to close at whatever time they want to close, but I'm not sure of that. I'm, I'm a little surprised, because typically, we don't have anybody that has ever come before us that has indicated they want to close that early. We usually, if there's, if there's a time issue, it's on the other side of it, but go ahead.
Looks like, I've, I've seen a lot of other businesses and liquors, package stores in the town, it looks like nine to nine for a lot of, it's pretty typical. That's what I've-
What, what hours would you like to have on your license?
On the license?
To give you whatever flexibility.
Flexibility would be 10, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The only reason we say that is because I don't, we don't see our business as having much traffic past 7:00 or 8:00. The only reason we say that is because I don't, we don't see our business as having much traffic past seven or eight o'clock at the latest from time to time. And I mentioned this in a letter to, to neighbors. But from time to time, we would like the ability to maybe have events, you know.
You don't want to have to come back and get special licenses and all that. Yeah.
You know, our business is going to be dictated like, it's not a place, it's not a convenience store. So it's not a place that stays open if nobody's.
So you're seeking a license from 10 A M. To nine P M.
Yeah, I mean.
Realizing that on many occasions you'd be closing earlier than that.
Absolutely. I think most occasions, I don't see this business saying, like I run the letter. Mike closes early at six o'clock in the off season.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
We were saying this isn't the business that, you know, in the middle of the party, you run out of beer and you send somebody out at.
But you have to get one set of hours.
Yeah.
So that when it's in season, there's not a problem.
But being respectful and mindful of the butters' concerns as well.
Okay, I'm going to go now go to the board to see if there's any questions or comments and we'll start with Mark.
I just get his hand up on the T V.
We have somebody on the screen?
Yes, Greg Smith.
Oh, okay. Greg, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Do you have something you want to say about this application?
I do. Yes. And apologies for my lack of not being there. We had an engagement in West Springfield. And we're actually in a parking lot of McDonald's on Wi Fi. But this was so important to us that we wanted to talk about the, you know, the character of Adam and Erica. Since moving to Yarmouth Port in 2018, they've been great friends and exemplary business, business owners, providing a top notch dining experience that's unmatched on the Cape. I myself work in the adult beverage industry and I'm fully confident that they'll be running a top notch, a top notch establishment and a best in class wine establishment. My wife and I welcome the new addition and look forward to being able to shop there. And the overall elevation of the new business in our town. So we're a hundred percent in favor. We, like I said, live at 28 minute tux it down at the end of the street there behind the gas station. And I'm Greg Smith. Yeah, he said my name.
All right. Thank you, Greg.
Hey, thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to board now to select me first.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome. Just a couple of questions and first one's for town manager, town administrator. I'm, I just don't remember off the top of my head. How many licenses does the town have and where are we currently?
So keep in mind that what we're talking about is a wine and malt. So with wine and malt, there, these are the off premises retail establishments that are subject to a quota. So you're limited. And the town is allowed to issue six wine and malt year round and we currently have zero. So.
You mean six additional licenses? Six total?
Six total wine and malt.
And we have zero?
We have zero.
Okay.
So this doesn't fall into the traditional package store model?
It is. It's a, it's a package store, but only wine and malt.
So there's, there's a distinction there.
Correct.
Okay. And somebody mentioned it earlier, but can you just tell me a little bit about the parking?
Yeah, there's a, a lot. So if you're facing, if you're on Willow, facing the front of the business to the left, there's a parking lot with how many, how many spaces? Third? Thirty spaces or so?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming and thank you all, the people who came to support you. No further questions.
Thank you. Darkus?
I'm, I'm just trying to orient myself. Is this the barn?
Yeah, the red barn. Yeah.
So Just Picked is continuing. Oh, I'm so happy to hear that. Okay. Okay. Actually, it, it sounds like a wonderful and very exciting venture. Look forward to just going there. Thank you. No other questions.
Okay. Peter?
Good evening and welcome. And I hope you're going to be very successful.
Okay. The only comment that I'd have is it's, it's very unique. There's nothing, not only in the north side, but on the south side either, that meets that kind of business model. So I hope that you have a lot more wine drinkers than beer drinkers up there.
Yeah, no, we, we feel it's, there's a market that's not being served right now. We hear a lot of people who don't, they, they choose to buy wine off Cape when they come, before they come on Cape. Or they buy in Boston or other places like that because they're not able to get the products, the specialty type wines that they're looking for. And it's maybe it's a niche market, but it's a strong one. And we found that at the restaurant that people are looking for these specific things. We brought them in and people are clamoring for them. And so we feel there's an opportunity here to service a market that currently isn't being serviced.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
You have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Does somebody have a motion to grant this license for the hours of 10 o'clock A M. To nine o'clock P M.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimously granted. Thank you very much. And thank you to the folks that cared enough to come out to support this application.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. The next item I understand is going to be a presentation, a video presentation, if I'm not mistaken, on the cable licensing. Is that ready?
Yes. What we have is I'd like to invite up as panelists the town's cable television special counsel, Bill Solomon is here to present the license to the board this evening. And I'd like to also promote up representing Comcast Cable Communications Management. We have Mike Gala, who's with us this evening. And if we can get Bill Solomon elevated, he can walk you through. I'd like to call the board's attention. There, there's a detailed package that has all of the the licensed language, which is very long, but Bill has provided a license summary that is in your packet and has the detail of all of the new provisions.
Thank you, folks. Can you hear me? It's printed ending up here. Thank you. Bill Solomon, Special Cable Counsel. We've met before. Remember right back in May and June, we, I met with the board. I provided a summary of the cable license at that point. And except for say minor change, very minor changes. It's, it's, it's substantially the same as it was before. And so what I can do is go through the, the license and the other documents. And, and then, then when I'm done with any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer. And I just want to comment on negotiations with Comcast. So in the summary.
Are you going to be following that summary more?
I will. Yeah. Why don't I go through that and I'll add one item to that. So to begin, the license is a 10 year license. That's the maximum allowed under state law for cable license. And in 10 years makes sense for the town and it makes sense, I believe, for Comcast. If, if we didn't have a good license, we wouldn't be signing it. And so the variable was not the term, but really making sure that the license was fair to the town of Yarmouth, which has an excellent public educational government peg access community program operation that's run through the town and also public through Cape Cod media. So there's, it's a 10 year license running from November 1st. Actually from a, I'm taking a look. I guess it's November 1st. No, November 1st. Actually, the license is October, October 1st. Oh, the summary was wrong. October 1st, 2022 through September 30th. I'll, I'll correct the summary. The number of Comcast cable subscribers should be at the end of December, 2021 was 12,029. The peg public education government access support is 5% of gross, companies gross annual revenues or that if it's affiliates. It's a broad definition of gross annual revenue. Doesn't exclude anything arbitrarily. That's the maximum allowed under federal law. And the peg support currently is 4.5% of gross revenue going to five. When you're at five, there are a few things that count toward the five. So what town gets quarterly will be a little bit short of 5%. This is a few other minor items, like the license fee to the state and the town, a dollar thirty a year that counts for the 5% cap. Peg capital support, and this was a crucial issue for the town, probably the largest part of the initial and middle part of the negotiations. It's $791,000 over 10 years, $79,100 a year. Now, and paid, paid annually on, on the beginning of December and then thereafter on the anniversary of, 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 of that date. I should say that you wouldn't have a number that, that goes as far as it does to meet the needs of the town. If it wasn't for the Comcast being a great corporate citizen in, in towns in Massachusetts and Yarmouth, having pursued to the Cable Act, having local government affairs people like Matt Geller, who are here, who know the town's cable program, who are familiar with the architecture, who understand the importance of community programming now more than ever in the COVID and post-COVID world, where, where people's connection with the town and with each other has increasingly become electronic. Comcast, through the negotiation and through Mike's knowledge of the town, understood the importance and that, on the other hand, you know, he's a tough negotiator. And so that number was negotiated early, but reflects, I think, a fair number for the town. Very helpful going forward because you have some initial, you had some significant peg capital needs. Peg channels, currently four channels and that will, that will remain. And one of those channels going, and that will remain four channels. The cable casting will be upgraded to, from standard definition on the peg channels. So what's called S B I format, serial digital interface. And that will improve quality of picture and sound. And that will be done by, by Comcast. The cable service to public buildings. It's due to the FCC's order a few years ago regarding what's called in kind consideration. We've decided to handle that outside of the license. Comcast currently provides, and I believe still will provide cable service to public buildings, your, your municipal buildings and the school buildings. And while they have certain rights under the FCC's order, I'm, I'm confident that Comcast, understanding that that was something they voluntarily offered the town 30, 40 years ago and something they're proud of, will be something that, that continues because of Comcast, understanding the importance of cable television in Yarmouth. Cable service avail, availability, available to all residents in the town as long as Comcast can get there, if they need an easement or permission from an owner. Standard installation, what the distance is to have a standard installation cost of 30, 40, $50 is 150 feet from the dwelling unit to the connection on, in front of the house. And that's both for aerial and for underground installations. One of the things not listed in the summary, but I, I know of great importance to the town and I'll provide a separate summary sheet on that is the customer service office. Currently in Yarmouth and a compromise was reached after extensive negotiations of which the town administrator, current town administrator was intimately involved together with the other folks working on the town side. Because that for five years, Comcast is required to maintain a customer service office in the, the town of Yarmouth. And that's section 9.1 of the license. And thereafter, the office for the license has to be conveniently located. Comcast has articulated to Mike that they have no current intention of moving anything. They're committed for five years. They're also that, as you may know, or you do know that that customer service office also functions as a facility for the vehicles and other operational aspects of Comcast in Yarmouth and the surrounding area. There's a senior discount, let me go still to the senior discount letter. Senior discount is totally voluntary for a company. A lot of companies don't provide it. It hasn't gone up in a while, but it's $2 off of the digital starter or extra, whatever it may be called at the current time for folks who financially qualify. The financial qualifications though are the broadest that exist in the state in terms of eligibility, not, not simply social security supplement income or Medicaid and mass health, but also mass fuel assistance and the property tax elderly asset or in, and income abatement relief under state law, which a number of residents qualify for. In addition to that, there's a, a side letter with respect to the electronic program guide that was just negotiated at the end of the license with Comcast. And with Mike, I want to thank Mike for providing that letter. Again, it's voluntary. And that letter basically says that over the next six years, if Comcast provides the electronic program guide, which did you know, for peg access, adding peg access to their guide. So people can look to see what's coming up, what's on. They can sync that with your, your video recorder. That if Comcast provides that elsewhere, and I believe they will based on discussions, that they then, town within six years of the license can ask Comcast to come to Yarmouth and discuss not only the financial ability of Comcast to do that in Yarmouth, not only the technical feasibility, but also of providing it here in Yarmouth. And my belief is that if, if, if it's provided by Comcast elsewhere, and again, I think it will be. I'm confident that your Comcast pursuant to this provision, when they come, will, you know, absent extraordinary circumstances, talk about providing the same thing here, here in Yarmouth. The final document is the internet, is the institutional network use agreement. Under the current license, the, the I net is provided in the license. However, for a number of reasons, mostly flowing from the FCC's in kind consideration order, at least from the town's perspective and from Comcast's perspective of wanting to try to deal with this out of the license. It was agreed in Yarmouth, as it has been in, in a number of communities now. Although most communities do not have an I net like Yarmouth does, but in those communities that do, a vast minority. What, what has transitioned in those, in those towns is taking that obligation of Comcast out of cable license and adding it to the, to a separate agreement, the institutional network fiber use agreement. And under that, the town pays what is a very low cost for that service. And last page in the print here, let me give you the cost. The cost would be for the partial year between October and the end of June, it's $9,750. And after that, it's $13,260 going up 2% a year to the end of the license. So that's a 10 year agreement. The town has the right to, on, on one instance, to drop locations that are connected to the institution network if they no longer need it. Your I T department says that's incredibly unlikely. That was the last issue that went back and forth with Comcast. You have the right to drop locations on one time under the license. If it turned out obviously that you were all the time, you needed to drop something, something considerably raised for Comcast as a business matter, since if you don't need the services, it's hard to imagine that, that that's not something that could be worked out. But for the license, there's, there's, there's a right to drop one or more locations on one time. After the first two years, you can always drop all of the. After the first two years, you can always drop all of the service. And we don't think that's likely because of thirteen thousand dollars a year. Given the extensive number of miles of your institutional network and the fact that fiber is a good cost. Now, why, you know, why does the town go from situation where it wasn't paying thirteen thousand a year for the institutional network to paying it? Well, again, on the FCC's in-kind consideration order, if you're at five percent of gross revenues franchise fee, PEG access support, then that, that the cost of maintaining, operating the INET that Comcast has, the marginal cost, could be something they could deduct from your franchise fee. So rather than leave that to a dispute, both towns and Comcast came to the sensible solution, first suggested by Comcast, of taking that obligation out of the license and out of a world where we don't know, and we could argue about what, what should or shouldn't be counted for the franchise fee. Instead, agree on a set dollar number. That's a good number for, for the value the town's getting. So in summary, we have a license, ten-year license beginning in October. We have the senior discount letter. We have the electronic program guide letter. And we have the institutional network agreement, which is outside of the license, but was part of the same process that, that provides ten years of cable, of internet, of institutional network to the town by Comcast. All in all, a very strong license that favorably compares to almost any comparison in the Commonwealth. And again, I think it reflects the, the hard work of the town, multiple town administrators, particularly your last, but the earlier town administrator. The, the IT department of, of your town, which was instrumental, working on the internet use agreement. And reflect, reflects Comcast understanding of the importance of these things to the town and, and Mike Galler being available, willing to, in a tough negotiation to work these issues out with you and this office. So thank you. I'll be happy to answer any question.
You know, I just thought of Bob that should we have read the notice into the record? Is that?
Yeah, we can still do that. Yes, thank you.
Should I read that into the record? I haven't done that.
Thank you.
All right, Tony Yarmouth Notice of Cable License Proceeding Regarding the Renewal of Cable Television License of Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. Tuesday, September twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two at six PM, Yarmouth Town Hall, Hearing Room eleven forty-six through twenty-eight, South Yarmouth, Mass. The Tony Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a cable license proceeding pursuant to section six twenty-six H of the Federal Cable Act, forty-seven, United States Code, Section five forty-six H, informal licensing process regarding the renewal of the cable license of Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. Comcast of Massachusetts, Roman Number One, Inc., on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand two at six PM at the Yarmouth Town Hall Hearing Room, eleven forty-six through twenty-eight, South Yarmouth, Mass, and via Zoom, video or telephone call. Instructions for accessing the remote meeting via online Zoom video or telephone platform will be provided on the Board of Selectmen's meeting agenda, available at least forty-eight hours prior to the start of the meeting. One on the town's website, two on the town hall bulletin board, and three at the office of the town clerk at Yarmouth at Town Hall. A copy of the proposed renewal license to be considered at the subject proceeding by the Board of Selectmen is available for review at the Selectmen's office. The public is invited to attend, impose questions, and/or provide comment signed by the Board of Selectmen, Town of Yarmouth. So why don't, before I go to the public, why don't I go to the board first to see if there's any questions at this juncture? Mark, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Dan?
Bill and Mike, thank you so much for the work you've done. Just two quick questions. Can you help me understand what conveniently located means for a customer service site when the five-year period is over?
You know, if, if I could ask Mike to address that first through the chair, it'd be helpful. I'll do second, but we, we may, we'll have different perspectives on that, but if Mike has a Comcast perspective, I'd love to hear it, and then I can tell you what I think.
Mike?
He's muted.
You're muted. He's gone to get a drink. What about you, Bill?
Yeah, the the requirement appears in, in your cable license. It's not simply a reference to federal regulation, but it's, it's a provision in your cable license. So I think it has to be understood in the context of the town of Yarmouth and Comcast. And the importance of that issue is reflected by the, the, the first five years requirement that the license be in Yarmouth. So clearly, it, yeah, and by its terms, it doesn't mean that it has to be in Yarmouth. But I think reasonably convenient would be understood based on those dynamics of its importance here and understood in, in respect to the nature of the Cape and traveling in the Cape. So for instance, if, if there was once, there, there are no case law on it, but let's say the issue was brought forth in Montana. Well, reasonably convenient in Montana is a lot different than in the Cape with multiple towns, with people, localities are, tend to be more unto themselves, where there's a lot of summer traffic. So, you know, I think that from my perspective, reasonably convenient really means that, that it's reasonably convenient. And if it's too far away or too hard to get to or too remote in where it's located, then it would not be reasonably convenient. You know, I think it might, might be to speak, but I think for Comcast, they understand that the importance of customer service in the Cape, because your percentage of seniors is multiple times higher than anywhere in the Commonwealth, you know, two or three times higher or four times higher than elsewhere in the Commonwealth. And convenience of a customer service office oftentimes relates to seniors. And traveling in, in the summertime, particularly now, an extended summer in terms of where, how people live, for now, stay in the Cape longer when they're seasonal, that, that also lets us know that, that what might be convenient, reasonably convenient somewhere else would not be in the Cape. So I think for all those reasons that it, it has, has, has great meaning, but it hasn't been defined anywhere. But I think it's defined within the nature of the negotiations and more importantly, the underlying nature of Yarmouth and travel to other communities.
I think Mr. Galler, you're unmuted now.
Maybe we could elevate Mike again. He seems to have been dropped as a panelist.
I would say that, the last thing I'll comment on, is that there are very few communities where Comcast has agreed to continuing license requirement that it be in one particular town. So last point before Mike goes. For Comcast, they articulate, and I accept this, I'm sure it's true. They're less concerned with closing on the Cape, the customer service offices in the Cape. They, they close many all over, including the Cape, but they're more concerned about not having, as they put it, a license requirement that says they have to be in one particular town. They articulate that. I believe they're, you know, they're, they're, they're saying it in a heartfelt, sincere manner. But, but that's from, from their perspective. I'm sure Michael has some thoughts on that.
Mr. Galler?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, sorry. I think there were some setting issues, but I did, I was able to hear pretty much what Bill said. And I won't, you know, drag it out too much longer, but he's correct. You know, we do look at, when it comes down to conveniently located, we've taken a a whole better customer service experience with our, our stores. You know, we, if you want to check out one down in Hyannis is one, and we've gone to more of, you know, the way I kind of describe is an Apple-esque type of store where you can come in and there are mobile phones, you can test products, things like that. It's just a whole better customer experience. It's a more regional approach because we, we offer so much more than just the ability to pay bills and to return some equipment at these stores. So that's what we kind of look at and, you know, take in consideration, obviously, travel and you know, where everybody would be coming from, from a regional approach. So when we look at conveniently locate, we, we do look at a lot of factors on, on where, what's the best option, you know, how easily can customers get there and those type of things. So that's what we would look for.
Mr. Galler, would I be safe in assuming that our senior citizens wouldn't have to drive more than one town away?
Question. Um, I can't, I, I honestly, I don't, I can't speak to that. We don't have a specific parameter on that. You know, some, some places involve, you know, multiple towns, but that's also, you know, where we locate the store and it's pretty easy to get to. But I can't say it would be, you know, just one town.
Is there any intent for discussion between the town and Comcast prior to any decisions being made about moving sites?
Uh, we do, I mean, we will talk to towns, yes. We obviously will always notify towns on, on our plans, especially given any type of license requirements.
Uh, one, just one further question. The senior discount, you, can you tell me what percentage that senior discount is?
Two dollars, two dollars off of their digital starter for the equivalent.
Thanks, Bill.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Two dollars off their digital starter.
What is the percentage of that?
Low, because Mike's little starter might be what, seventy dollars or?
Uh, I don't have the rate card in front of me, but I think it's actually less than that.
Okay.
I know most senior discounts are ten or fifteen percent, so I was just curious if we were trying to match that. You just pick two dollars.
That's our, that's our discount that we provide universally through all the towns.
Okay, thank you.
Again, for the, the public's knowledge that the, the Cable Act provides that it's totally voluntary, so that it, there are a lot of things in this license where the, the, the town had a firm line and, and Comcast negotiated in a fair way. Unfortunately, senior discount, senior discount is something that's not within the town's authority to require. And therefore, in, in a negotiation where both sides are hopefully approaching it as they did here with good faith, that it becomes, it becomes difficult for a town to say, well, we don't care what our authority is, you have to give us a better discount. That, that, you know, doesn't work because it's, at the end of the day, they, they don't want to have an example that's different from what they do elsewhere. And secondly, it, it does make it more difficult to get all the myriad of other issues resolved. So, you know, what we hope is that that they're price competitive as best they can be. They're, you know, in video, as we all know, there is more competition than before. And that, that can have some effect on, 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 on rates. But it was outside of parameters of the town to, 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 to require it more. And Comcast provides their two-dollar discount. Again, not in, not in explanation or defense, but just explanation but not defense of that. Many companies do not fight any senior discount. So that, from that perspective, and, and many, there are towns that don't have a senior discount from, from Comcast, and that was something that, that the negotiated for the town made clear that the senior discount was important to the town. And if we can't set the amount, it was indicated that it was something that really would be needed here.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dorcas?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Peter?
Um, Mike, a couple of questions. In, in your summary bill, it says, it says the, the update of the, from standard definition to SDI gripping may be passed through the licensee to subscribers to the amount under applicable law. What does that mean in English? In terms of dollars?
Well, I would, the Mike can answer. The SDI upgrade here, you know, might, it, it can range, but the most I've ever seen, very high, and I don't think it gets this high. It's not even HD, so maybe twenty, twenty-five, twenty thousand dollars on the high end, on the low end, uh, five thousand. So if you take, at the high end, twenty-five thousand dollars and the, the number of subscribers we have, it's, it's pennies. I can do the math if you like, but very, very, very low. And the, we're, that's their right under federal law. From the town perspective, what's helpful there is that there are many times where a license will say that, that, that the town has to pay that amount. I mean, I view it's, it's Comcast equipment, and they should do it. It's their signal. They want to be up to standard. But in many, many licenses, that amount for the SDI upgrade is, is the town's cost, which you would take out of the money that Comcast provides. Here, the, in the negotiations, we were able to succeed in not having that as a town cost and basically saying to Comcast, like any company, you know, what they charge their customers, since it's not regulated by the public government anymore, what they charge their customers is up to them. But that, that, whether they should get that from their customers if they want to get it. But they shouldn't be asking the town to pay for the upgrade of the technology of their transmission system. Mike agreed with that, so that the fact that it's, 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 they have a right to pass it through is a win for the town because whether they do or not, what they can charge their subscribers to some degree is controlled by the market. So they could say they're charging their subscribers for twenty thousand dollars worth of cost, and what they can actually charge is their rate to some degree now is determined by the market. And that's better. That's an unknown. They might really not be able to pass it through, or maybe they can. But if the license said that the town had to pay for it, well, then you'd have to pay for it. So in a sense, that was a, a win, a, a important but small win by the town that the town wasn't going to pay for the upgrade of their cable system.
Um, next question to Mike. What do you describe as good service? I'm thinking specifically of the store in the next town where I've had to use it on a couple of occasions, and I've had to wait anywhere from forty-five minutes to over an hour. I don't, do not consider that good service.
Um, I've never experienced that. I don't know if you, I mean, there could have been a heavy traffic volume of what's going on. You know, but service comes into a lot of different factors, obviously, time being one of them. What we have to offer, how our customer service reps are handling everything. But I can certainly take that feedback back. You know, I've never, I've entered into the stores myself and I've never waited probably more than fifteen minutes, so that, that seems longer than I, I would expect. But I can kind of check into that. I could, I, I don't know if it was a staffing issue or something along those lines at that point, but I'm, I'm happy to look into that.
Okay, I, I've, I've never had a long wait issue in the, in the Yarmouth store, but I have in the Hyanna store specifically. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this point, why don't we go to the public and see if anybody has any questions or comments? I don't see any. Just a couple of observations. First of all, I think the question that Selectman Horgan raises is a particularly cogent one about the convenience of a location after the five-year period runs out, especially when you consider all the senior citizens we have. And I, I note that, you know, you, you couldn't commit that it would only be a town away. But you seem to indicate that you would be discussing that location with the town before you finally decided upon it. I think that I, I would want Comcast to understand that we are not your typical Commonwealth community, that we do have a disproportionate number of senior citizens in this town, many of whom, you know, don't have the economic resources or the modes of travel or the health. or the health, um, that are more prevalent throughout, you know, other parts of the state. And, uh, we, we do have different demographics here and I hope that, Comcast would be very sensitive to that after that five-year period ran out. I'd like to know if either of you want to comment further on that.
I, I, you know, we, we have, through the town administrator and others made it clear how important that is in negotiating this. There was a sense that it was important to, to have, have a five-year commitment. And then after that, hopefully that since Hyannis is a budding Yarmouth, uh, since it's the largest town, that the reality, that reality would, would come as close to you could as ensuring without a license requirement that it be no further away than, than one town. But as indicated, and the town could put this in writing, you know, after this meeting to, to, to Comcast, expressing just in writing, again, the importance of, uh, after the five years of the, the office being reasonably convenient. And moreover, pointing out that, that since the, and this was done during negotiations, since the, uh, office, as I mentioned, is in a Comcast facility, therefore they're not paying additional rent for that, in a sense, probably for that office, that, that the town would certainly like them to remain there, even though it's not, as Mike said, they're not their vision of what the perfect customer service experience would be. From the town perspective, it is the perfect customer service experience that the most essential functions of bills, bill paying and equipment, uh, pickup and return are met in that local office without a significant additional cost to Comcast. And ask that they keep that in mind after the five-year period, try as best they can to maintain that office in the Yarmouth facility. So certainly fair for the town after this meeting to put a letter together just to express that, uh, since it's really putting in writing what is articulated here at the meeting.
The, the other comment, actually, on, on a positive note, um, in terms of the, and, and I think, stating this more for the benefit of, of, of the public, the income eligibility for the, um, this senior discount, I'm glad that that's not overly bureaucratic, which I was afraid it might be. To, to, to show eligibility, it's proof of any one of the following, which, which is, uh, SSI eligibility, Medicaid or Mass Health, Mass Fuel Assistance or Property Tax Elderly Asset slash Income Abatement Relief under Generalized Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five. So that, that seems pretty simple, um, in, in terms of the, the burden on, the person who's looking for that discount. And I hope that, you know, processing that will be as simple as the statements that I just read from the, um, from the literature. The, the last comment is, I think, um, with what's, what Selectman, uh, Smith said about good service, I, you know, is, is always an important thing to remember. I don't have any experiences, plus or minus, I can relate to what he said, but I would have to agree with him that waiting the length of time that he talked about to, to, to get some, somebody's attention is, uh, is falls short of what I would consider to be a standard of good service. So I hope we can see some improvement there. Does anyone else want to? Have a question or comment? Do we need a, some action on this tonight?
Yes.
I, I would, yes, I, I, I'd recommend you vote, vote, uh, both agree, both the license uh, and the, uh, and I, I do a motion, I, I recommend you, you, uh, approve the license and issue, issue the license and approve the agreement in, in one motion. And acknowledging both the senior discount letter and the, uh, program guide letter in that vote. And then a separate vote, uh, vote to enter into the, uh, the, the institutional use agreement with Comcast. So two separate votes, the first issuing the license, uh, agreeing to the terms and acknowledging that vote, both the senior, acknowledging that vote, the senior discount and the program guidelines.
So let's take it in steps and you can, you can help us get through it. So the first thing we want is a motion to issue the license and approve the agreement, correct?
That's correct. Acknowledging the two side letters, yes.
Acknowledging what?
Of the two side letters, the side letter on the senior discount and the electronic program, just acknowledging that as part of the vote, yeah.
Electronic what?
Electronic program guide letter and the senior discount letter.
So we get the senior discount side letter.
Right.
And we get the PEG Electronic Programming Guide side letter.
Right.
Just acknowledging those, so the world knows from now that that was for you. It's not in, it's not in a required term, but just acknowledging that those letters.
So if we, if we say we approved the agreement and the side lets, letters referred to there and that would be sufficient?
Yeah, I would just say, I, I say that you're not approving the side letters, but you're acknowledging them.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve with the, um, two side agreements.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agreement with the two side letters and issue the license, correct?
Correct.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Did we leave anything out that you need us to act on, Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, just the, uh, the internet use agreement, if we could approve the terms of that. Uh, and, and, uh, agree to and approve the terms of the internet access agreement, and that's also an agreement you can sign.
We have a mo, that motion to approve the internet access agreement. All right, we have a second. All right, opposed in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Does that do it, Mr. Solomon?
It does. Oh, I, I thank you very much. It's been a long process. Your team's been great, so thank you. Thank you for letting me, uh, be, uh, remote. It's a two, a two hour and three, two and three-quarter hour drive. And, uh, it is, I certainly wanted to be part of it, so thank you for all your hard work.
All right, so we've had public hearings about wine and cable. And, um, now we're going to talk about signage, Route Six A.
Thank you.
Um, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Hey, Bill, can you put the oxygen on? Yeah, we're not, there's no air in this room. Can you turn on the vent? Yeah, particularly in the ever of COVID, it would be helpful to have some fresh air.
It is no circulation.
You haven't noticed?
I have. I have. I got, I got a spark on it, just like you do.
Yeah, after that last presentation, I think we need all the air we can get.
I know. Can you imagine doing that for a living?
No.
Doing that with him for a living.
That's tough stuff, man. You talk about technical stuff. You had some good questions.
In reality, it's that. I mean, Comcast writes all the rules.
Probably have the closest office in Braintree.
Yeah.
They write all the rules. I mean.
We gotta send that letter. Which one I recommended?
Beta complete. Can you pass that down to Selectman Smith?
Well, he, he does good work, Bill, does. That's a very strong license.
Thank you for the air. Appreciate it. I, I just, for whatever reason, I think, I think I completely have been tuning up. I, yeah, I, I can't hear him and understand him most of the time anyways. So I thought, I think it's just me. At least I thought it was. Okay. Curious with this item, uh, what's the, uh, procedure? Is, we're going to get an update?
Yeah, we'll invite Jeff up. He has got, um, a, a lot to.
That would be great.
Participate in this and, and I can just kick things off. And I did bring some pictures. We went out and, uh, took some shots. I'll, you know, go through a couple of them and just to orient, uh, folks is, this really goes back to the, um, May when we had the last hearing in front of the Board of Selectmen and, um, we had a lot of public comment, a lot of discussion. And the board adopted some very specific short-term recommendations and then some long-term recommendations on some site planning, which, um, is, is gearing up now. But, but on the short-term solutions, there were several items that we, uh, the board recommended specifically to the Department of Transportation. And they, they were not all, um, you know, gone along with by the state. You know, the first one was we requested that there be some cross-hatching, donating, no parking areas that will be painted on the roadway, eliminate some of the need for the signs. And then there was also, uh, the request from the Mass DOT to place some signs, no parking signs.
Excuse me, Bob, did they agree or not agree with that?
They did not agree to that. They refused the, I'm sorry.
On item number one that you just read, that's a no.
That's a no on, on the cross-hatching.
Okay.
And then.
Want to keep track on where the yeses are and the nos are.
And then the, the next, um, items that, that the board had some very specific and very limited locations based on the public input that was received to place some no parking and parking signs. For example, um, on the north side of Route Six A, uh, the board requested two signs to be placed. Um, and to also remove that single older sign that said no overnight parking. The board had, um, request on the south side to indicate.
Can I just ask, with number two, was that a yes or a no? Did they approve that or not?
We're going to talk about that a little more. They, they approved it, but the problem is with all of these.
They approved it too much.
Right to it. Um, if you take a look at, at the pictures, you see some of the signage that, um, and, and you could see right down the street, um, there's an example of the no parking sign and, and you could see the, uh, distance between the signs. Uh, the, the town requested approximately five signs and I, I think that the state put up closer to fifteen signs. So, um, it has been in excess of what the town required. And, um, I, I know Jeff has been out there. He's reviewed it with the police department. He's been in contact with the Mass DOT, um, about the signage. And, um, we wanted to put it on the board's agenda to, uh, take a look at the signage. I think people have been up there and seen it.
Oh, yeah. You can't miss it.
Bob, can I interject here? None, none of these two-way signs were requested, correct? That was something they just did of their own ingenuity?
Correct. What, what we're looking for here in, in these locations is that there were areas where there was sufficient geometry to allow parking. And we wanted to have a sign that said, this parking, you can park here and then, and just have a couple of signs mostly on the other side and, um, in front of, um, a couple of the businesses where it's too narrow to have no parking. And so what, what they did here is instead of just putting up the parking sign, they said, well, in, in this side of the sign, you can park. On that side of the sign, you can't park. And, and the way the sign is oriented too, it makes it very difficult to even determine where exactly is the space and where is not the space. And, you know, quite frankly, I mean, I, I feel had they gone along with the pavement marking, would have made it much easier. And, and I don't understand that decision at all because without pavement marking, the signs are very difficult to follow.
Was it something you said?
No, I just think, you know, the state has this whole engineering division. We have all of our, you know, they won't come out to the hearings. We have all of these hearings and we, we submit the request that goes into their engineering division and, um, they're, they're like, oh, yes, we'll take it from here.
Yeah, I think that Jeff Colby, the Public Works Director, I think the only thing I would add is I can, uh, say that on both items two and four, that, that Bob did a good job of, um, reviewing. Uh, in both those cases, we asked for two new signs and they more than doubled it in one case and, and for my calculations doubled it in the other case with the allowable parking sign. So I think they went, uh, a little overboard, but, um, in my discussions with Mass DOT, uh, it appears they did it for clarity purposes. That's, you know, the, what they're saying. And they are receptive to reducing the number of signs, but only after we, uh, produce a sketch and identify which specific signs that they will review. And if they feel that they can live without that, then they will consider removing that. So, um, we still have a ongoing dialogue with DOT and they are receptive to reducing the signs, but we have to be more specific in our request, um, as far as which ones, and then they want a, a review of those signs.
So let me just make sure, Mr. Chairman, is it okay? So you, you conveyed to Mass DOT that there was a certain excess, it was excessive. And they had shown no real concern or receptivity whatsoever to reducing the number of signs or do something that might aesthetically work better, like a painting on the road. They showed no interest in that whatsoever.
They offered no solution, correct? Other than the town making suggestions that they would review.
When you, I mean, the, the whole, I mean, I was just astonished when I drove by and saw. I mean, basically the message is don't come to Yarmouth Port. I mean, basically they're telling folks, uh, even if you live there, don't, don't come here, which is just absurd. And, uh, to me, when I, when I, when I looked at it, the message that was being conveyed is that someone, someone, somewhere in Mass DOT wanted to stick it to Yarmouth Port. That's, that's what came across to me. This isn't a, you know, I mean, I hate saying that publicly, but that, that was, as I'm driving by, what's going through my head is that someone really wanted to really stick it to the town. Um, I, 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 I think this is, uh, this whole display of signage is just outrageous. It's awful. It needs to change. And we need to find some way to get through to somebody at Mass DOT. I mean, this is the, the number two problem with me at Mass DOT. They dropped the ball on Route Twenty-Eight. Uh, and now it looks like they're making Route Six A look like Route Twenty-Eight, you know? And, um, I mean, we've been trying to do signage there that actually enhances the attractiveness of it. But even the height, the historic district won't go along with our banners and other measures to, um, to, uh, beautify that area and create a sense of place there that might help in terms of mitigating traffic speeds. So, um, I, I don't know what else to say other than to hear from the public, because I think we're all on the same page. I think, um, it would be, I think what people want to leave today's discussion with Mr. Chairman is some sense of what more we can do to make, get this, get this, get the signage within reason. And, and to, and to get it to be more, a little bit more thoughtful, more aesthetically correct.
I want to hear from the public as well, and then I think we have to try to identify who we can appeal to. And, and write a very strong and detailed letter to say that, you know, you've basically detracted from the historical character of this neighborhood and the village character of this neighborhood by putting excessive signage up. But, you know, I'd be pre-COVID. I traveled that road at almost a daily basis going up to the court complex. And, um, I shared with our town administrator, I, a, 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 a very brief story about, uh, the, a judge in the Superior Court who was from the Western Mass area. I think he held out of Holyoke originally and bought a place on the river down here. And he retired after many years and they had a retirement party for him at Comacord. And I remember him saying that, how blessed he was to live where he lived and to travel every day down Six A on his way to work at the historic, uh, Superior Courthouse down there. And, um, he was just, um, just so grateful that he was able to start his day that way of driving down Six A and made a, made a real point of it. Um, and for those of us who come from more urban areas, it, I think it's even more appreciated, um, that neighborhood. And I hate to. That neighborhood and I hate to see anything detrimental happen to Route six A and I'm very upset by what I'm hearing. But why don't we now go to the public briefly and and. Why don't you come up either to the table or to that microphone, speak into the microphone, identify yourself and tell us what your concerns or comments are.
Okay. First of all, it's been a while since I've done one of these since the church, Peter. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for the time that you all take to try to represent. The conflicting constituents' needs fairly. I know that can't be easy. The parking, as you pointed out, the signage that's been put up in Yarmouth Port is excessive, confusing, creates what I think could classify as sign pollution. And conveys a completely unwelcoming message that says, don't stop here or shop here. In addition, with no parking enforcement. It is really just an ugly exercise in futility with people already consistently disregarding all the parking signs and parking wherever they like. It's on a daily basis, so it's not working. The point of this sign being up really helps what I was going to try to address. I've lived in cities. I I was born here, Mattany, D Y. But I have lived in New York, Miami, LA, Chicago, a few of the biggies. What they would do is that that sign, they would paint yellow curb to that driveway. And there would be a little sign that says, to our parking between. And that's it. And everybody gets that. It's how the world works. So I don't understand what this was, other than the fact that what it honestly seems like, and I'm not being sarcastic. It honestly seems like they had signs that they just had. And they tried to make them apply because they didn't want to try to get signs that would actually reflect what they needed to say. So these signs are there. That sign is parking, says to our parking. It is pointing directly into Simply Vintage. The shop, straight into the business. It is saying, no parking anytime across the street, which actually is consistent because across the street, there are about forty five signs that say, no parking. We all understand that this stretch of six A in Yarmouth Port Village is technically a state highway. And unfortunately, we have little control. And I, before I came here tonight, I was very upset, very disheartened, to be honest, because. I felt that all the meetings that we had, and and I personally went to quite a few of them. I came here tonight after a full day of work, ran home, let my dog out to pee and came straight here. I don't want to be coming to these meetings fighting to save. What little of Cape Cod still looks like the Cape Cod of my childhood, but I do it because I do care. And in coming to these meetings and trying to appeal to you to understand that this village and this road. Is family to the people who grew up here. It is emotional and and it, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman. I don't think it could possibly mean more to someone who wasn't brought up here. It truly is like a member of the family and to see what happened. That day when they came out with the jackhammers and these signs, by the way, they aren't put perpendicular to the road or or the site. They're at a sort of an iffy angle that kind of, we weren't sure what we're talking about either. It's absolutely disgrace. So obviously, we need. A parking plan that's thoughtful. This was definitely not it, and I'm relieved to know that you guys did try. Obviously, it introduces the subject for me as a concerned citizen and a resident of Yarmouth Port and the person who works in the village. That it's maybe a conversation to have that we could in some way take over this section of the of the road, the way that Barnstable Village has. Because what's happened here shows that they don't understand this stretch of the road. Common sense should have even caused a greater consideration in placing and choosing the signage for a road that is itself also a scenic historic attraction. That's visual charm is actually the reason the businesses thrive that are in the village. What has been done here is no less than desecration to that. We should be taking steps to protect and preserve its authentic, unspoiled charm and not destroy it, which clearly this is. Credibility regarding comment on the village is relative to context, so to give those of you who don't know me some context. I am a D Y grad. I grew up in the village. My dad had a business in the village. And the unspoiled charm of the village is the reason I chose to buy a home here and live and work in Yarmouth Port as an adult. I'm a member of the Yarmouth Port Historical Society. I volunteer at various groups in town, in the village. I've worked at Hallitz and Jack's as a teenager. I've worked at Bachelor Hall, the church. I now work at Design Works. There aren't too many places I haven't worked in the village. In my experience, given that context, in my lifetime, Yarmouth Port has always been a village. A small but but strong community in the best sense of the word, where business owners tucked cheek by jowl into tiny business strip that it is. Chose to relate in helpful cooperation and an easygoing, live and let live way. When I contacted Sheila, Sheila from Old Yarmouth Inn. About coming tonight, she said, oh, everybody just, everybody, it'll all work out. Everybody's, you know, we all get along. We all try to help each other. And I said, I don't feel that so much anymore, Sheila. That supporting vibe in our little bucolic place of lending each other a hand is feeling more and more like a a memory. That is what Yarmouth Port is to me and what it has been up to this brouhaha, which started all this, caused by a few sour apples in the bin. Regarding the interests or concerns of the village going forward, I'll close by asking you, please. To keep the quiet historic beauty of the north side foremost in your mind. And regarding any improvements in quotes, please listen to the people who appreciate. And operate in the cooperative community spirit of the village and not against it. In all sincerity, I do have a few real and practical thoughts that could be solutions to a lack of parking that I think would please everyone concerned. And I would be happy to sit down and relate them if anyone is willing to meet and listen. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Greg.
Greg Belzickian, Lighthouse Keepers Pantry, one seventy three, Route six A, Yarmouth Port. I'm definitely an instigator in getting the conversation going and I appreciate the the Board of Selectmen getting involved. It definitely was difficult to navigate the community that we had. This is, I am not a fan of the signs. I never wanted them, but listen, this is the way it went. It's just not appropriate. It doesn't look like Yarmouth Port anymore. I appreciate the fact that we have to have a secure and safe Route six A. I mean, I just differ on so many different levels of what what's needed. At the last meeting, I really felt like the positivity that I bring to Yarmouth Port is neglected. That I really bring happy customers, happy people. I do bring traffic. But to just to desecrate the downtown area with no parking signs, and I'm sorry, Chief Lennon, but. To put orange barriers in front of my building for twelve weeks over the summer, that's not partnership. That's just like sticking it to me personally, and I apologize. But that's just, I mean, I'm, we are there. Kelly and I are there every day. We manage our business. She's on the counter every day. It's 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 hard work and to feel like the town is not looking out for the small businesses is hurtful. I appreciate my parents' past, but I don't live in that era. I live in today. I have a small gift shop. I'm creatively trying to come up with plans for that's location to be more successful. Because that gift industry is changing. The consumable business is happening. And we're getting a lot of great traffic and people are happy. But it doesn't feel like the town is embracing the happiness and the spirit that we're bringing to the community. There are, in my, again, my opinion, a small number of very loud mouthed people that got their attention, got your attention and I. And I I did lose, but this is not a good use of our resources. It's terrible that DOT won't. Listen, I'll be happy to work with a Senator or a Selectman or and a another level of government if we need to get more people involved. To be able to make this change happen quicker. I've been to DOT on my own a couple of times for the Sagamore Christmas tree shops. I'll do what it takes to make it better. And I'll work with the town to come to come up with a better solution, but I just hope we can work in a way that look preserves the historical nature of Yarmouth Port. And to celebrate the success of the small businesses that are there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sue Cameron and I live in South Yarmouth and I'm not familiar with all the background here. But what I heard this gentleman say is that, or somebody said, you asked for four signs and you got fifteen. And he said that the DOT said, choose the ones that you would like us to take down and we will evaluate. So it seems to me you go to the four signs that you like and ask them to take down the rest and go through that process because that's what they've offered you. That's just my idea.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
I think that's it for the public.
This gentleman's coming forward.
Good evening again. Anthony Ponbianco, Seven Minute Lane, Yarmouth Port. I just echo what was said previously by Greg and others, that the signs don't reflect the community at all. And they're an eyesore and they're, they don't make any sense in terms of where they're located or what they're seeking to do whatsoever. And it's not in favor of the small businesses and the community that we have. So whatever the select board of the town can do to remove them, I would be all in favor of.
Okay. Anybody from the Board want to?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I've kind of this, I think there's nineteen or twenty signs, new signs. It's frankly overkill bluntly. We we ask them to. If possible, paint on the street, which would make it less obtrusive. It would be on the street. It's clear in several cities. I know I know Mass DOT has done that and on their state highways and other places. I don't know why they couldn't do it here. We also asked them to redo all the crosswalks, which they apparently didn't deem as necessary. I'm I'm quite upset. It was, this is unintended consequences. And as as Mr. Forrest said, it's it's, Mass DOT is telling people, do not come to the village. Do not park in the village. Do not be here. I mean, it's 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 extremely intrusive and and I'm I'm quite upset. The first time I saw them putting up, I only saw two signs. I said, well, that's not too bad. The signs are great. And then I came back the next day and the rest of them were up and one. This is nuts. It's just overkill.
Can I just ask a question? I know you went through the the short term solutions. Were any of the longer term solutions acted upon as well? Prepare proposal to reengage design.
Please, please state your name, please.
Sharon Hamilton. I'm a consumer. Conduct hearings in front of the Board about the design. Were any of the longer term actions taken?
Yeah, hi, Sharon. Thank you very much for that question. I want to have Jeff, if you could bring folks up to speed. There's a new contract that has been put in place to discuss the restoration, which was the the new streetscape design as part of the water main project. And I know Mr. Colby's been managing that contract and it's very nearing a start, so.
Yes, thank you, Bob. We've engaged VHB, who did some initial concept designs previously. To further those designs and also complete the design of the Water Main Replacement Project, which is scheduled for sometime in two thousand twenty three. We're hopeful it'll be the spring, but it does depend on how quickly we can get that design completed. As part of that outreach with VHB, we've identified at least four stakeholder engagement meetings, which we will be having in the very near term with the community. On, you know, what they would like that area to look like. We had some good input previously, and so it's a matter of refining those, that input that we got and showing that on plan so that we can then. Apply to Mass DOT with specific plans on what those long term improvements look like.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, may I ask Officer Lemon a couple of questions?
Certainly.
Officer Lennon, what do you, what do you think?
Jeff and I took a, we met up there the other day and we both, actually, I called Jeff the day that the signs went in and I said, Jeff, we have a problem. And we need to look at this because that is not what I envisioned. I envisioned signage that was going to not take away from the feel of the village. But allow people to know where they can park and where they can't. So this is definitely overkill. Jeff and I discussed possibly painting hash marks where the no parking is, that way we can take some signs out. But the problem is, and Jeff and I were there the other day, we were looking, we're standing there and I'm in uniform and somebody pulled up and they were parking in a place that they can't park. So the problem that we're dealing with is we can't regulate bad behavior. On Sunday, I was driving back from Harwich and somebody's parked on the north side of the road with their bumper three inches from a no parking sign. So we need some assistance from the public. I think we also need some assistance from our business owners that if they see somebody come in that's parked illegally, say to them, you are parked legally. Can you please move? The woman that I spoke to was very nice and she said, I apologize. And she did a U turn and she pulled in behind the building. She found a place to park. I think that there are things that we can do to make it, to make this much better. Jeff and I discussed, and I don't know what Mass DOT could do to us, but I I would suggest that we find out how much it would be to just paint where we want to paint, no parking. And and just get it done and take some signs out because we we need to do something to fix this. This is certainly not what we wanted. And, you know, to Mr. Belzickian's point, yes, the barricades in front of the barricades in front of his building were ugly. We were not targeting him. But we put four traffic cones out there and they were stolen in a day. So I had to put barricades out there and the barricades stopped the complaints that we were getting from other people about. Cars parking in front of Lighthouse Keepers, which we all know that area was never designed to be a parking space. That is a sidewalk that was removed and needs to be put back. The north side of the road, the signs, little bit of overkill, but if we don't have all those signs on the north side, people are going to park between the signs where they don't see anything. And they're on the sidewalk, which then creates more problems. The last thing that we wanted to do is the Armith Police Department is go up there and station an officer and start writing thirty five or forty dollar tickets for people that are parking illegally. So I'd like to sit down with Jeff at some point, take the public input and see what we can do to get some of those those signs removed. And maybe put some our own markings on the ground to so we can show people where they can park and where they can't. But some of the the issues that we also deal with is we're still getting complaints about people parking too close and then not being able to see coming out in ho at night. That's a very dangerous alleyway to pull out of. We still have parents that are complaining when they're trying to get in and out of the nursery. School that's there that they can't see because the sight line is is too short going down six A. We know from the speed study that most vehicles going down six A are not speeding. They're going about thirty to thirty two miles an hour. Some are even less than that. It's the volume of traffic that we have there. So I think there are some creative things that we can come up with to get rid of some of these signs. There's no doubt. And again, I saw the signs going up and I called Jeff immediately and I left him a voicemail message and said, you know, we have to come up with something because we're going to take some heat over this. Because this is, as you said, this is an unintended consequence of what we wanted. But we need to make sure that there is a clear line of where people can park and where they can't. Because we are still having people park where you can see those two people standing there in the picture just after that as a sidewalk. We have people that are still parking there. And my fear is that we're going to have someone who's mobility impaired that has to go out into Route six A. Or someone pushing a carriage has to go out into Route six A to get around a car that's illegally parked. So I, you know, we're willing to work with the businesses. We're willing to work with Jeff to come up with a solution. And it's going to take all of us to figure out, you know, what we can do to fix this because right now this is certainly not what I intended. It's not what I envisioned. I drive through Yarmouth Port all the time. I think this is ugly and I think there's something that we can do to fix it. But it's going to take a little bit of, a little bit of skin in the game from everybody, from the town, from the businesses, to make sure that we can bring Yarmouth Port back to the way we want to see it. And this isn't what we want.
Jeff, Deputy Chief mentioned about putting some markings of our own up in the street in that area. We can't do that without DOT permission, can we?
There's a joke with the police. What are they going to do? But it's Jeff, so Jeff has the answer to that, so.
We should be able to just ask forgiveness.
It is their road. We do need permission for anything that we do out there, including installing or signs, pavement markings, that type of thing. It's something that.
And they're not likely at this point to have the town intervene with what they're doing. I mean, whatever has to be undone, they're going to have to be the ones to do it, right?
That's correct. They're not asking for us to do any of this. In fact, through some of these suggestions, I, on the initial correspondence back in May and June, suggested that if they had a problem with the pedestrian signage in the road that, you know, we could provide that. And they politely declined. They said the town is not authorized to install those. They feel they're a hazard to vehicles driving by, that type of thing. So they have certain safety standards that they. That they apply and. And it's, would be inappropriate for us to, you know, out there in the middle of the night and do something different.
I understand that you have to work with these people constantly. And so you're kind of in a, in a difficult position. But could the board of select, Fernando or our town administrator reach somebody at a higher level than the people you're dealing with to see if we can get some action?
Well, I think that's always helpful when it gets to a, you know, a rock and a hard place, if you will. So it's certainly something that we could explore. I've been dealing with the district office. There might be some, you know, legislative liaison or someone that could affect some change more in, in favor of what we're looking for. It's certainly something we can take a look at.
So what, you know, what I'm thinking about, just off the top of my head here, is that we, we get a letter to somebody in a superior position with perhaps some photographs and let them know in very strong terms that they basically created a real disaster for this, for this highway that's, that we can't live with. And the people of our community are very upset about it. And they've really infringed upon one of the treasured locations in this town. It's a very historic place. And, you know, tell them what we want them to do to remedy the situation.
Put them on notice.
Depending on the response we get to get our legislative delegation mobilized, maybe get them in here or have a meeting with them in some forum. Not a, not a, not a kind of an input meeting, but an action meeting to say, look, here's what we've got. Here's the problem. Here's what we want to have done to correct it. We want you guys to go approach the people that have decision-making authority in the Commonwealth to get some action for the, I mean, this, this is, this is outrageous. It really is. It's got to be, it's got to be remedied.
Mr. Chairman?
I have some other ideas, but none of them are legal.
No, I, I'm very much interested in the deputy chief's suggestion of just going out there with paint and removing signs and doing, doing what we want.
Well, I, I, I don't think that's probably your first.
That's kind of my first.
That's like before the revolution, that's what you do.
Mark, I've got some friends, relatives up in Boston that could probably help us out. I have a question, which is also, I don't know if anyone's noticed it or took note of it, but the signs are incredibly tall.
They are.
It, it doesn't seem to even be.
See them without.
It doesn't seem to be in a uniform code to what, what's done elsewhere. It's just a complete disaster. And regarding. Chief, are you chief now? Chief in waiting, Lennon.
That's the title now we use.
They couldn't get a better guy for the job. The problem, I think you're going to come up against, chief in waiting, is you have, since cars arrived, cars have been parking in Yarmouth Port on both sides of this road. Now, I understand, and we have to come up with a plan because there's one side that has a very distinct pathway that should be the pathway that people use. And then there should be crosswalks that go across. But I, working at Design Works, I'm in a unique position to see how many ambulances go down this street in the summertime and how often those cars have to pull into that area on the side to get through when it is, when there's a lot of traffic. And there can't be a curb put there because you're going to result, it's going to kill people, literally. You won't be able to get ambulances down that street. It's just something that you have to keep in mind. And the other thing is just, you can put these signs up day and night and we can go out from Design Works and say, I'm sorry, you know, there's a parking sign there. You, I did it today. This woman pulled up right at Inaho, right behind the sign that says, no parking behind the sign. And I said, I'm sorry, that's, they just put a sign there. And she said, I'm just coming in for a minute. And at that point, as a business owner, I'm going to get into an argument with somebody who's about to come into my shop. It's not my job. You know what I'm trying to say? I, I, it's, you're getting, you're creating an antagonistic relationship with the business owner to police the parking that looks very unwelcoming. So it's complicated. It's not that I don't want to try to help, but that's not, I don't think that's realistic. I, I don't know what the answer is, but I know you have a problem because precedent over the years has been, this is the first time in my lifetime that suddenly the parking was this big of a problem and that we had to have all this signage and everything. And people are just used to pulling up for their 10 minutes or whatever, wherever they are, and doing what they've always done in Yarmouth Port. So undoing that is going to take, regardless of the signs, if you don't enforce it, people are just going to do what they've been doing. It's my opinion, bud.
Thank you. Jeff, do we, as, do we have an inventory yet of what, what particular signs we want taken down? Have we got to that level yet, whether it be through you or you in conjunction with any other department heads?
Yes, as Deputy Chief Lennon mentioned, he and I met out there just yesterday to start that process. So we have taken a look at that. There's, you know, some signs that clearly, you know, are too densely located, that certainly having a little distance between would be more appropriate. We'll take a closer look at that as we develop the sketch. We've been asked by DOT to come up with a sketch plan of which signs. And we'll review that a little closer to see if there are additional signs that can be removed. But we have started that process just yesterday. That's a great question. DOT will tell you that this is the standard height. They have seven feet to the bottom of the sign and that's the way they do that. You know, they have to put up signs on all different types of roads. This is probably the most rural type of road they manage. So it looks very out of place in this context, but that is typically their, their height for signs, seven feet to the bottom. And it has to do with people walking and not hitting your head, that type of thing.
Chairman, may I ask Jeff a question? I'm sorry, I was trying to grab you before you sat down. On the, on the new lines that are going to go up and, up and down 6A, are they going to be on the north side of the street, south side of the street? Or is that to be determined?
Currently, the gas lines will be located along the, the south side of the street and the new water line, which isn't, the design's not finished on that yet, but is tentative to plan for the north side of the street.
So, so the whole, the whole street's going to get torn up?
With two different utilities, correct?
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Just excuse me, just two quick points. One, I'm not suggesting that we go rogue and commit crimes and rip out signs and paint the, and paint the roads so that the state comes down on us. That's one thing. Jeff and I, Jeff and I, we looked at each other, we kind of smirked when I said that. So I was, you know, being facetious. And then I understand that you don't want to, Dan, you don't want to get into it with a customer. We wouldn't expect you to. I would just say that, you know, maybe you say to them, the police monitor this area and you could get a parking ticket if you park there. And then let them make an educated decision. You're correct. Right, right, right now, right now, people do park, people do park wherever they want up there. And the problem that the police department has is we receive complaints and people say to us, how come you're not doing anything about it? So it puts, it puts us in the middle. That's our job and we will handle it. But you have to understand from a public safety perspective, and this is what really drove the meeting back in March, is the fact that we were getting complaints about people who were saying that they couldn't see pulling out of the alleyways and they were afraid of accidents. We, we did have data that showed that there were accidents in that, in that area. Some of them, not, not all, but some of them were directly contributed to sight line issues. We know that it's a very heavily traveled road. And again, from a public safety perspective, we cannot allow people to park on a sidewalk and turn a blind eye to that because it's an issue. Now, yes, have people parked on both sides of the road for a long time? Yes, and maybe the police department is a little bit at fault for that. We should have done a better job addressing it. It has now come to a head, for lack of a better term. We know about the problem. We have to go up there, we have to address it. And again, what we see here was not the intention, and from what I, from, from, from what I remember for our meeting, this was not the intention. This is, this is overkill and we, and we need to work with Mass DOT to, to clean this area up and make it what it should look like, but also have proper signage that people understand that they can't park on sidewalks and they have to park where it's designated. And we were forced with this because DOT said, if you're going to have designated parking, there has to be signage and it has to have an hourly timeframe to it. So this, this is kind of what we were stuck with. So I'm more than willing to sit down with Jeff again, come up with the, come up with a plan, work with DOT and try and clean this up. And then the police department will, will do our best to go up there and make sure that we're monitoring it and continue with, we had a great, we had a, we great success with asking people to move. We did have to, to write some citations because there are some people that just were clearly up on the sidewalk. But other cars, if we, if we see them, we try to educate them first before we go to enforcement. Because nobody wants to get a monetary ticket. We don't want to do it. The appeal process through, through Plymouth is very difficult. So we just want to make sure that we're, we're meeting that balance. The Friday, we don't, we haven't received complaints about the Friday Club. And the times that I've driven by it, they're literally stuffing all the cars off of the road. So if there are cars that are parked on this, down on, down that way, and I don't, I think the sidewalk over there is on the north side of the road, it's not on the south side. They're not on the road like this. Like cars are literally parking on the highway, on the, on the sidewalk here, down there. If they're off the road, because they don't park on 6A, there's no way that a car in front of this, in front of the Friday Club could park on 6A. So they're off the road on the grass. So that's their property, people can park there. Everything you see right here was born out of the, the complaints that we received from the, the innkeepers across the street about cars parking in front of lighthouse keepers. Excuse me? Well, we've received multiple complaints. We received complaints from, from some of the businesses on the north side. And then, because they said that people were parking in clearly on the sidewalk on the north side in front of their business. And then we also, we did some research and Amanda Lima, the engineer, she went back and looked at some accident data. We pulled out complaints that we had received going back to 2019, when it was Happy Fish, about the numerous complaints that we received them. So we took all that data, rolled it all up into a neat package, presented it and said, this is the issue that we have to deal with. And then we came up with a solution. And again, not to beat a dead horse, but this is not what we were looking for. And I'm more than willing to work with, to work with Jeff and whoever else to try and come up with a better solution. The barricades were placed in front of, in front of lighthouse keepers. Because that area directly in front of lighthouse keepers, and we discussed this at the meeting, that area used to be a sidewalk. We showed a picture from 2018 and the, the former owners did a fantastic job cleaning up the front of the business. But in doing so, they've removed the state sidewalk and put in, put in. Excuse me? The orange barricade.
I'm going to have to ask people to stop having a cross conversation like this because I don't think the public can hear. However, and I, I don't think it's productive to, to try to unring the bell. And as we've stated before, we don't have jurisdiction over state property. So on that sidewalk, if that was state property and we, we can't as a town say, well, we're going to allow people to park there. We can't do that because it's not our property. If it was our property, we could make that kind of a decision, but we can't. So that is unproductive. I think what we got to do is concentrate on what's here now and what we're going to do to best remediate that situation and get a plan, a specific plan as to which of those signs we want removed. And then try to go to somebody at a very high level and, and let them know that this is an urgent matter and that this is a, a very historic area. I mean, in town generally, they try to place signage that's compatible with these older areas, with cemeteries and everything like that. And here it is, your main artery on 6A, and they have all these commercial signs on it. It's ridiculous. I mean, they, they couldn't have done a worse job if they tried, really. As Mark said, they're trying to make it look like Route 28. And, and it's, it's the furthest thing from it. So can we do that? Can we get, can we get a very definitive plan as to which of those signs have to go? Jeff, you can meet with the, with the deputy chief and any, anybody else who feels appropriate and with our town administrator. And then we'll drag, you know, find out who it is that has a high, at a high decision-making level in the Commonwealth and have the board write to them and tell them that this is an urgent matter and this is what we want to have done to remediate this problem and, and do it within a relatively short window. That, that would be my recommendation, Dan.
Before you all go, I just want to apologize. You guys came to us in good faith, asked for our help. We listened, we tried to balance the needs. And then we made recommendations to the state and we're all agreed that none of us are happy. None of us intended what took place. And I agree with Mr. Stone. We'll take the corrective steps necessary. We just ask for your patience. Some of this is out of our control, but we are listening and we are trying to protect your businesses and to, you know, give the area the respect and the signage it deserves.
We'll CC that level to, to our political representatives, our state senator and our state representative. Just so they're on notice and, and in the bullpen in case we have to go to the next level after that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thanks. I, I agree with everything that's been suggested. I do, however, think we should be mindful that, you know, I'd like to think that this problem can be solved. It should be able to be solved relatively soon. It shouldn't be that difficult. The problem is we're dealing with the state. And I think what I've, what I'm taking away from this exercise is that on the list of longer-term solutions that we identified, number, section two, number four, where it says, evaluate the possibility, feasibility and cost of the town to take over this section of Route 6A in Yarmouth Port Village. I think quite frankly, I've, I've, I've come to the conclusion that we've got to really focus on that. Because, you know, like you, I'm always driving, driving to the county courthouse, you know, for, for other business and other members of the board are as well. You look at what they've done in 6A and Barnstable Village, it's beautiful. The point is, is the point is, is it's, it was done in conjunction with the village, the business owners, the residents. It was very much a community enterprise. I think clearly here, the community has ownership. We, we should have ownership of this place. And I think that option really is important. And I think that we should be thinking about that as an article at an upcoming town meeting relatively soon. I'm not suggesting that we vote for it or endorse the article, but we should be gearing up for at least having a draft article that, with, with supportive information on what it would take, what's it going to cost us to take this over? Because I think that's, that's the only way, at, at least in my, in my mind. I'm convinced at this point, given what we've been going through here, that that's the only way we're going to solve this long-term. So that item really needs to be focused on, Jeff. And that's a value, you, you hear what I'm saying? Evaluating this, the possibility, the feasibility and the cost.
Number four, long-term solution is what is.
Yeah, absolutely. To be clear, all four of those items are within the scope of the VHB contract that we have.
Okay, that's great. That's good news. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You know, Mike, you raise, you raise an interesting point. Initially, when that came up, I wasn't really wild about it because of the maintenance obligations that would go along with the ownership. And I was thinking, well, the state's doing that now. Why would we want to undertake that responsibility? But when I see what has happened and what a disaster that is, I would have a tendency to agree with you that we want to try to get local control of that area.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, it's important. I would argue that it's important to draft the article, put it together, to put it on the warrant and at least give the voters of Yarmouth the opportunity to make a decision, yea or nay, whether or not that's something that they want to do. And it may be something that the board's divided on. We may not all be in agreement on it, but I do think it's an issue.
Let's ask them, they're here. How do you feel about that, Dan?
Zach?
We have nothing to make a decision on in front of us. We have no idea of the cost, the ramifications. I mean, I couldn't possibly begin to make a decision at this point.
Darkest side, you feel about it?
I am very interested in all of the facts, quite frankly, so that I can make a decision going forward. Because this, to me, is just an exercise in frustration. And I think the only way we can control it is to take it back. And I think the only way we can control it is to take it back. I mean, that breaks my heart seeing what I see there.
Peter?
Philosophically, I'm very much in favor of us taking it over. But again, I need to know that the facts, the costs and so on and so forth. This is an aside, Jeff. Harwich is a part of the state highway. Brewster's part of the state highway on 6A. Both of them have the, the pedestrian signs right in the middle of 6A. And so are we being treated differently than, than the other towns?
I think you could make a case for that's a possibility. It could be they also didn't get permission, they just went and did it. Those particular signs that, in my estimation, have a little more flexibility, they're just temporary. Some of the more permanent changes, we really need to go through the approval process.
Right. No, the, the signs, the signs in Harwich and Brewster are definitely temporary signs.
And we have those available. We did in advance order some of those, so we have them available.
Mr. Chairman, your thoughts on taking over 6A?
I think that unless I see a response that's really sensitive to that area and that's, shows me that the state is going to be a good steward of, of that area, then I would. In an absence of that kind of a showing, yes, I, I would be. Again, we'd have to work out details, we'd have to look at finances and things like that, of course. But no matter what, I, I don't think we can live with what's there. I just don't.
If I can just add, Mr. Chairman, you know, food for thought. Many, many communities in these villages will have business improvement districts. They'll create an entity, a tax, its own taxing authority so that the costs are shared in terms of the business improvements. And obviously, the businesses that are affected would be consulted and are involved in the decision-making process. And that's not unusual. Hyannis has its, a business improvement district. There are other villages that, that do so as well. So there, I guess the point I'm getting at is there are a variety of ways to finance these without them becoming solely a burden on a municipality. So it's definitely an exercise that we need to go through. I'm glad that we have a consultant under contract to help us figure that out. I've just learned from this exercise, I don't think this is going away. I'd love to think that we can solve this really soon, but I think, I think these kinds of headaches are going to be, become common and sustained because I'm not convinced that the state is a good steward of this. And I share the sentiment and the concern of the residents and the business owners there that this is a very, very special place and it deserves to be respected. It deserves to be treated and managed with respect. And if the state can't do it, then we've got to figure out a way to make it happen. So, yeah, I think that's a very, very important component in this. And I, and I would lean heavily towards supporting something like that. Or at least support getting it on the warrant, so that the voters can, I mean, ultimately, they're the governing body, town meeting. And I think, I'm, I'm always a believer in even controversial items, giving the voters a chance to vote on it. Let them decide. If we think there's some merit, at least in the debate and the discussion, then let's bring it forward. So, and I think that's one of those items. Again, we as a board may not feel unanimously about it, but I think ultimately, it's something that the voters should really be given an opportunity to act on. So I feel strongly about that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just, Mr. Chairman, when you take over a piece of state highway, sometimes they will improve the highway before they leave it as part of the, sort of the cost benefit. There's a couple of projects that I've been involved in that when we took over the highway, the maintenance and the obligation, they funded the improvements for it before they left. Because otherwise, you're leaving them in a poor condition of highway and people don't usually want to take that over.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, we ready to move on? We understand the game plan here?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of you that came today. Appreciate it.
That was tough. That was a tough hearing. It was just.
I don't know that you got that.
Did I miss some?
I don't know that you did all 10.
Take a look. While I get ready for the next one. Are we ready? Go on to the town administrator evaluation? Okay, so for the benefit of the public, we do an evaluation of our town administrators annually. We're late on this one, but we do have it done. And it's not just this town administrator, it's all the town administrators. This is a, a employee performance evaluation. It's done by the town administrator on other department heads and things like that annually. But we're just here to address his evaluation tonight. I think what I'll start with briefly is what these numbers mean. There are different grades to give the town administrator and, on different aspects of performance. Rating from zero, which is unsatisfactory, to the number one, which means needs improvement, to the number two, which means satisfactory. The number three means superior. And the number four means exceptional or outstanding. The individual evaluations done by the board members were given to me. And the scores that we're going to be talking about is a compilation of all those five scores averaged out. There are no unsatisfactory scores of zero, not only in terms of the composite score, but there were no unsatisfactory scores on any of the individual scoring by the five selectmen. In terms of needs improvement or satisfactory, the same is true. There are no scores indicating a need for improvement or, or that the performance was merely satisfactory, either on the composite score or on the five individual evaluation forms. All scores that were given on the individual forms were either threes or fours, indicating the category of superior, which matches three, and exceptional slash outstanding, which matches four. The, the, the various categories very simply were number one, knowledge. Number two, productivity. Number three, decision-making. Number four, oral communication. Number five, written communication. Number six, budget slash financial administration. Number seven was leadership. Number eight is public relations. Number nine is work relationships. Number 10 was staff training, development and training. Number 11 was personnel practices. And 12 is the overall rating of those previous 11 categories. He got some very, very high scores in a couple of areas, all, all very good, all very solid scores throughout. But in the terms of knowledge and rating, you know, he got a near-perfect score. He got an average score of 3.8, which is a very, very high score. In productivity rating, he got a three. Again, three is in the superior category. He also got a three in decision-making, three in public relations, a three in personnel practices. And then he got grades of three, like 3.2, 3.4, 3.4, 3.6. So the two highest areas were knowledge rating, which was a 3.8, and written communications, which was a 3.6. The raw score was 36. And to, to reach the performance objectives of the contract, so that he got certain financial incentives. He, he was, I believe that score was required score was 33 and he surpassed that. In addition, the, the contract that was negotiated with our town administrator originally was a three-year contract. But it had a provision that if he got that threshold score of 33 or greater, that that contract would automatically extend to a fourth year. And if next year he gets a similar score of 33 or greater, it would automatically extend to a fifth year. So I congratulate our town administrator. These are very, very high scores. And the thing that was impressive about them was the consistency throughout the board. Everybody, again, on each individual category gave you a rating of superior or above. So that's, that's, that's pretty terrific. So does anyone on the board want to make any comments? And if, if you do, it's fine. If you don't, that's fine too. And then I'll ask the town administrator if he wants to make any comments. Do you have any comments to make, Mark?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm very pleased to see the evaluation. I think this has been a, this has been a tough period of time. This has been a difficult transition. It has not been the smoothest. I mean, I, I think to the public and to the rest of us, it may appear to be smooth, but there's been a lot of work. And some of that started when Bob Lawton served as interim administrator. And that, what I mean by that is, is it's just working on issues and challenges, both on the administrative side as well as just sort of in terms of dealing with major projects. When Mr. Rittenhour came here, you know, he had to sort of hit the ground running and, and had to very, very fast. So I'm, I'm very pleased with the way things have worked. I just think it's important to just note that, that it's been, it's been a challenging time with a lot of issues, a lot of projects. There are things that I call legacy projects. These are the thing, these are the holdovers from years before the arrival. And I've been sort of surprised at the number of them. But I think both Bob and, you know, I, I want to give some credit here to Bill Scott. And I'm, and I'm sure, sure Bob will make this point as well, is that these two work as a terrific team. And I think the two of them work very well together. And I'm excited and very thrilled with the team that we have. And I'm pleased with the, with the results and the evaluation. As they say though, it, it all goes downhill from here though. But really, congratulations, Bob. Well done. Good job.
Yeah.
I too am extremely pleased with the level of leadership that we've gotten since your time with us, Bob. I found you highly competent in every area. Frankly, if I have any complaint, it's with the tool that we used. Because when I look at the tool, many of the questions, I think asked us for information that we are not privy to as members of this board. A lot of it was relational with your staff in terms of how you performed with your staff and other managers in the area. I think if you go through the tool, there's several of these questions that I marked possibly lower than you, than I would have liked, is simply because I did not feel I had adequate information. And yet, I, I look at the aggregate and I probably scored you on the higher end of these. I think you've been a tremendous town manager. You are competent in every area. You have made incredible staff hires that have strengthened the position of this town. I think you've shown a very high level of respect for this board in terms of honoring our role and bringing the information that we, to us that we need to make good decisions. You're always willing to educate us and direct us if we need it. I, I frankly, I'm so pleased that we were fortunate enough to get you in this town. And it was at a very pivotal time where I, I thought the town was going in the wrong direction, frankly. And you've turned that around and we're in a very, very healthy financial situation. Your level of constantly encouraging and supporting your staff is admirable. And exactly what I would expect from a town manager. And so I just want to say thank you. You have really done your job admirably and well. And I expect that the next evaluation will continue to improve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan Dorcas.
Well, as a new kid on the block, I've relied quite a bit on you to help me, guide me through the ways. And I've been impressed, very much so, by your knowledge and by your team approach to things, which I think there isn't any other way to do it than to go with the team. And you're, you're a great leader of that team. And then with Bill by your side, I think you make tremendous leadership for the town. And I can't thank you both enough for what you've done this year. I'm impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorcas. Peter?
As the second new guy on, on the block, I, I, you've been a good mentor to me, which, which was quite important. And Bill as well, because, you know, learning stuff. And in terms of legacy thing, I'm glad that we're getting all the minutes up to date, which is, which is great. It's just one of those things. And as, as Mr. Horgan said, you know, some of the, some of the items, work relationships, leadership. I looked at the way you treated me and the way you've treated people in the audience. And I assume, and the way I've seen you interact with, you know, some of the staff, I'm assuming that that's what you did. But again, I didn't have really good knowledge, so I just had to infer. But I'm very, very impressed with the town's leadership to thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Bob, do you want to have, have any comments or you want to pass or what do you want to do?
Well, I wouldn't pass. Knock me down a point on my oral communications, but I mean sincerely, and I mean this from the bottom of, of my heart. I am truly honored to be here in this position in front of this board a year and a few months into my tenure as town administrator here. I really want to thank the board for all of your efforts to, to bring me along this past year. I want to thank all of our departments. We've got a couple of them here, but they've just been tremendous with me. And most importantly, I want to thank Bill Scott, my conscience, the vice principal, my backbone sometimes. But the, the wealth of information that he's brought to the town, it really has been tremendous working with him. You know, I just want to say to the board, this has been a tremendous learning year for me this past year. I feel like a different person than when I, I first started here, even though, you know, I had all this experience coming in. But the, just all of the things that are going on, there's been a tremendous amount that we've been working on. And I, I just want to say too is, I feel like we're really picking up speed at, at this point in terms of dealing with issues, in terms of our ability, working with the departments to bring things forward. We've got a lot of the background done and, and things are, things are really moving forward. And we have a lot of very interesting challenges facing this town. This is really, you know, an urban environment that we like to make believe is a small town. And, and that's the, the huge balance that, that we really need to do to create that comfort level. And, and there's a challenge every day in that. What I, I just want to say and make sure that the board understands this completely. Every day for me in my life coming in here is an opportunity for improvement. I don't feel as if we've achieved the things that we want to achieve yet. I think we're still building in terms of our relationships, our outreach to the public, everything. And, and there's an opportunity for my improvement in terms of my performance, in terms of how I coordinate things, in terms of my communication that I, I see directly. And I, I just want, you know, you to know that my commitment is to working on making those improvements every, every day. And I, I want to take advantage of that to try to work with you to help move the town forward together on, on so many fronts. This is a fabulous town. This is a fabulous town, and, and I'm just very happy to be here. So thank you very much, and your comments were just almost breaking me up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, and I thank the board for, um, the time and attention that they gave to these evaluations. Again, I was really, um, struck by the level of consistency. I could tell that people thought long and hard about what, what they were doing with these evaluations. You don't see that, that often. Usually you'll see come some kind of upticks or downticks on certain things, and you didn't see that here, and I, I was very impressed by that. Okay. So we're done. We got it done. Finally.
Take a deep breath.
Until next year. Um, so we, we have some things to work out. Um, I will, I guess, talk to our town administrator in terms of what financial issues this triggers with the, with the, um, with the contract and also the extension of the contract. And we should probably formalize that in some kind of writing.
That would be great.
Okay. All right. So now we get to talk about, we've talked about signs, we talked about public upheaval, uh, we talked about wine and cable. Now we're here to talk about water and emergency bylaw of wat- water emergency bylaw. Um, it's going to be very easy to enforce. You drive around, somebody's got a green lawn, a green lawn, they're guilty. A brown lawn, they're not guilty.
There you go.
So, um, Jeff and Laurie are here to, um, make a presentation on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Jeff Kolbe, Public Works Director, and Lori Rosella, Water and Wastewater Superintendent. Uh, we were before you just two weeks ago giving a drought update, and one of the action items was, uh, a bylaw that's been distributed, uh, to you. It's in your packet. Uh, just a little bit of background, the town does have an existing bylaw, but it is a emergency water bylaw. So it really only kicks in when we're in that highest level, that deal category four, where there's an emergency and those are the actions you need to take. Uh, that was enacted thirty or so years ago. Uh, so what you have before you is, is a update to that, that really reflects these conservation measures that we've been incorporating this past season. Uh, you, you approved a, a policy back in June, and this bylaw backs that up. The policy, again, had many of the conservation measures that are really codified in this bylaw. Uh, what I would term this past year is more of an educational approach to, uh, the public because we didn't have a bylaw that really kind of supported what those enforcement measures might look like and, you know, give the authority in which to, uh, strictly enforce some of the things that we did, uh, quite a bit with education, with the, uh, TV interview that we did, with the individual mailings, with the, uh, code red calls that went out, uh, the social media, uh, blast. And so I, again, would term this year of more of an education, uh, approach to that. What you have before you is the DEP, essentially the DEP model bylaw for what they're recommending that water systems adopt. We tailored it to Yarmouth, so it has, uh, some very specific references to our, uh, different codes and the town and this board's authorities, uh, but it is very consistent with what we'd expect DEP to essentially require of communities, uh, going forward. As we mentioned with a previous presentation, we don't currently have a, um, a water withdrawal permit, but we expect that to be something that's going to be updated very soon with DEP. And so having a conservation policy and a, um, a bylaw that gives authorities in place is very important. Uh, so it's all part of that process. Uh, again, this, uh, bylaw would authorize, um, the different enforcement measures. So we took a, a stab at what those might look like, and at the very back, you'll see, you know, some of the penalties, those are all recommendations. We're certainly, um, here to, uh, hear input from the board as to what you think, uh, should be changed in this bylaw, or what things you like in it that we should, uh, continue to move forward. It is an article, and I think your next item on your agenda is to review the draft town meeting warrant, but it is an article that's on the, the fall town meeting, so we can have it in place for next season. Uh, that's, uh, certainly the intention, but we're really interested in what your thoughts are on this bylaw, and, and if we, uh, want to make any changes or improvements to that. I believe, uh, Bob did have, uh, town council review this, and he might have some further information on that. Uh, but, but really, we're here to, uh, get input from you on this, on this bylaw, and happy to answer any questions.
My understanding is we're gonna have a, a quick overview of the warrant tonight, of which this is one of the items, and then we're probably gonna have two more passes at the warrant prior to town meeting, correct?
That's correct.
And that will also include, obviously, opportunity to comment further on this bylaw if anybody wants to do that or hasn't had a chance to read it, or, or wants to study it or think about it. It's not something that the board has to make any kind of an affirmative vote on tonight. The other thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, I had a brief conversation with Bob about the enforcement issues here, and, um, he was telling me that town council said under the penalty provision on page four, and, and Bob, you correct me if I'm wrong, that you were advised that the maximum fine that could be imposed was three hundred dollars?
That is correct, and it's under the non-criminal disposition.
And so we have, uh, under the fourth offense, five hundred dollars. So number three should say, third and subsequent violations, three hundred dollars, correct?
Correct.
And that would take care of that?
Yes.
Okay. The only reason I skipped ahead is so I don't forget to bring it up. Um, that's all. Which I have a tendency to do. So we got, we got that. Um, I know that, um, Dan has been a big proponent, uh, on, on this issue, um, and has stated repeatedly about his, uh, lack of tolerance, for lack, for lack of a better word, about, about people just openly violating this. And there clearly is a lot of open violations. Like I said, just go count the number of green lawns and you'll see what I mean. By commercial establishments as well as residential residences. Um, so there, there's gotta be a big public, there's gotta be a big education piece here. This is something the public is not used to. Um, this is something that, you know, a lot of people think it's maybe, maybe being overly dramatized. You know, it's like global warming, people, you know, half the people believe it, half the people don't. And, and you have to get into the, the science of it, um, to make any progress. But on this, um, it, it, it's very, very serious because, um, if we can't meet the demand for household use of water, we have, we have a really, really huge problem. And, uh, it's not something we want to do, and we gotta let people know that, you know? And that, um, I, I think one of the things we have to do, too, is explain to them the criteria that, what, that triggers these bylaws and, and kind of the, uh, soundness of that criteria, that, that this is just, it isn't a knee-jerk reaction on behalf of the town. It's certain thresholds of, of water scarcity or of, of, uh, of, of certain demand peaks at certain times of the year that require certain levels of, of water, um, that have to be taken into consideration. So I've always, you know, I've always believed your best shot of, um, making a big behavioral change like this is education. But I also know I'm not naive, that there's certain people that are gonna do it anyway, and thus you have the penalty provisions. Um, Bob alerted me to the general laws, I haven't looked them up yet, but he gave me a citation that I wrote down, because I asked the question, how do you, how do you administer these fines? What happens? What if somebody wants to appeal? What do they do? And he cited me a section of the general laws that apparently the, um, appeal would be to a district court if somebody wanted to appeal. Um, but I would think it would be very difficult to appeal a case like this. I mean, if somebody's using water when they're not supposed to be using water, and they have an automatic sprinkler system, and somebody takes a picture of it or something, I mean, what's the defense?
In addition, we also have a very good, um, monitoring system with regards to usage. So I think we touched upon that last time we were here as well. If we have a individual account that we can narrow down, it's difficult when you're dealing with sixteen thousand accounts to really, you know, kind of weed through that data. But if there was one we were particularly interested in, we have some very granular data on that particular usage that would help build the case as well.
Did you say that, that there's a, um, I, I, I think you did, I just don't know the right terms, is, is sprinkler system that you can get that has like a backflow regulator that if it's raining out or something like that, it won't, it won't operate?
Certainly, we're working on, you know, what the requirements are that we'd like to, uh, recommend implementing going forward, and one of those would certainly be to have a rain gauge on an irrigation system, so that it does not operate when it's either recently rained or.
Those be put on existent, uh, existent systems, or would they only be compatible with new systems or with the rain gauges?
You should be able to retrofit that with just.
You can retrofit them.
It's pretty common these days.
Okay. Because Dan has pointed out, and I think others too on the board, that, you know, and I've seen it myself, you're walking on a rainy day and you got all these, all this water just shooting out of the ground, it's kind of wasteful. And I would assume, why would the consumers want to be paying for that?
It's a good point. That's part of the education, yeah.
So I, I think that could be a big impetus is in terms of, um, you know, getting information on these rain gauges and that they can be retrofitted and approximate costs of what they would be to let people know that it's not something exorbitant. You know, get some, get some actual data on prices.
Right.
Say you can get these between a hundred and fifty and two hundred bucks, that's all. And, uh, anyway, so, um, you want some feedback on the bylaw, Mark?
Yeah. Thank you. Um, in terms of notices of violations, how would they be served? What would you do?
Well, I can tell you what, uh, other communities do in, in sending, uh, mailing, a certified mail is, is a really good way to do that. I don't know if you have any experience with that in other communities.
Yeah, we have mail and certified mail.
And the evidence of the violation would be what?
Well, it could be a number of different things. It could be what was mentioned before, a, a picture or some kind of documentation that the, you know.
I think the evidence only comes into play, Mark, if they contest the fine.
No, but I think it would be helpful to know exactly what kind of evidence they're gonna use to make a determination that there is a violation.
It's like a speeding ticket. An officer says, "Mark, you are going fifty-five in a thirty-five mile zone." He doesn't show you any kind of evidence, he just tells you that you're being cited.
I understand, Mr. Chairman.
If you appeal the case, he's got, he's got to produce evidence.
I, I understand what you're saying. I just, I think part of what I'm trying to elicit here is that creating an administrative record, some kind of record so that we can have some clarity in terms of what that evidence is. So I, I'd like to hear it directly from you folks. What would that evidence be? Would it be a meter reading, some kind of report on the meter? Would it be photographs, combination of both? What do you think?
Right. It, it could be all of the above, and certainly our meter data is, is very critical to building a case and showing a habitual pattern of irrigation on a, a Monday, a Wednesday, or Friday during a period where they shouldn't be irrigating at all in a certain period of time. So certainly the data is, you know, one of our biggest tools, one of the most powerful tools, in my opinion. But certainly, a, a picture or an observation from just the crews driving around with a, a field note, uh, would also be evidence that we would capture within the file.
You're talking about an eyewitness?
Correct. Typically, what you would have is somebody driving around, one of the town employee driving around, taking notes, um, in, in the, usually in the regular course of, you know, their business, and you notice, I've, you know, noticed a few myself, you make a note and, you know, send it to the office, and they're able to document that. So there's a, a number of different ways to do that.
Okay. No, I think.
Well, it should be just, I mean, because, kind of an important point, because it gets to a lot of our communication and outreach with the community and how to, on, on the non-criminal disposition, um, how to sustain on, on the appeal. And the only point that I want to make is that you, you can't issue a ticket because Mrs. Hodgkins calls and says, "I saw my neighbor," it's a third party. And what you would have to do is trigger the actual enforcement officer, eyewitnesses the use of water in the restricted period. Now they issue the citation, and then they're able to testify that, that that is how it occurred, because we get a lot of third party. So I just want to make it clear, you know, for the public, that you can't issue third-party tickets, but that can trigger your own investigation.
Okay. That, this is the reason why I wanted to get a discussion on this, just get this out on the record. It's likely to be a question at town meeting. Uh, I, if I were a resident, I'd want to know exactly how this is going to work. So I think that information is very, very helpful. The other question that we're likely to hear from residents is, what about all the government or municipal violations? I can't tell you the number of people that I heard from that would say, you know, during the emergency, the sprinklers were going at the football field, uh, over here at the D Y. What do we do? Again, this applies to all users, so I'm assuming that someone will go out, observe a violation, make a notice of a violation, and that would include the notice going both to a, but, to a government as well as non-government user?
It would apply to all users. Uh, it does not necessarily apply uniformly, depending on the policies of this board. Uh, one of the things that we need to, uh, make recommendations to you on is, is with regards to, um, uh, ball fields or, you know, public, uh, fields, and is there certain periods of time, even during restricted periods, where that would be acceptable as part of a, a safety measure, if you will, a public good, where, uh, you know, in the middle of the night, uh, leading up to football season, the football field could be irrigated, something like that. So there are certain exceptions, and, and in page two of this bylaw, it attempts to identify some of those. Now, we can certainly tweak those, that's the, the feedback we're looking for. Uh, but as, as you can see, I think it's about the third bullet down, it says, irrigation of public parks, recreational fields outside of the hours of nine AM to five. So not during some critical periods, but also not during the middle of the day, it might be allowed, um, through approvals of this board or its designee. So there are certain, uh, cases in which you could look at exceptions, and, and after reviewing this bylaw with the board, we did actually want to end tonight talking about one of those situations, and that is the second bullet right after that, where it says irrigation, uh, to establish replanted or resotted lawns or plantings during the months of May and September. So there's an effort to identify time periods that are outside of the, uh, critical demand areas of June, July, and August, that maybe people could look to repair their lawns or, uh, newly seeded lawn or, or water, um, you know, plantings through an irrigation system that might be subject to review and approval. Again, that's not automatically granted, but there is a, a process that's attempted to be identified in this bylaw of a, a review for exceptions, if you will.
Okay. I think one of the questions, uh, with respect to recreational facilities may have to also to do with, um, golf courses, and I think.
Absolutely.
Golf courses use their own wells?
Yes.
They do. Okay. So in, in that case, they're gonna continue to use their own water? I would assume that since they're using their own water from their own wells, that they're not subject to these types of restrictions, or are they?
That's a great question. They're not subject to this specifically, but they get their own water withdrawal permit from DEP, and so they are, uh, subject to those specific DEP identified conservation measures. So I talked regularly with Scott Gilmore, our Director of Golf, and, and throughout this, uh, period, because we were getting people that were concerned and want to make sure he was following those required DEP measures in his permit, and he was. They'll be a little bit different than these, so they are areas where they're allowed to irrigate during certain restrictions, but he has a separate permit with DEP to take advantage of those. And also, another thing that's worth noting, it's unique to Yarmouth, but we do, uh, irrigate the golf courses, um, specifically at Bayberry, uh, with reclaimed water. So because we are continuing to generate reclaimed water, we want to be able to distribute that out to the golf courses, and that is not a, um, a demand on the aquifer because it is being processed for the septicage facility. So, you know, we're working closely with them for all those reasons.
Right. So it's a reuse.
But we also have a, um, a cap that the state imposes on us as to how many million gallons of water per year we can use at those golf courses, and if we want to use more, I think we have to try to get them to increase that capacity.
Again, there's a, a permit with DEP on the water withdrawal for his wells specifically that would have a cap, uh, just like the water, uh, divisions wells have caps established by DEP for them as well. Just like the water divisions wells have caps established by D E P for them as well.
The only other question is calling it a water, the, is chapter one forty-two in our code of regulations? Is that one forty-two related to water supply emergencies? Is that what it states?
That's its current title.
That's the current title.
I'm wondering if there's any value, and I just put this up for discussion, rather than calling it water supply emergencies, calling it water supply conservation and emergencies.
I think that's a great suggestion. We just captured the current title, but in updating it, I think that makes a lot of sense.
So I'm going to just put that out to the board if that's okay, Mr. Chairman. I see a lot of nodding of heads. Yeah, I think there might be some value in just adding that conservation in there.
I think you raise a good point about public fields and things like that because take the, take the D Y football field, for example, if you don't put any water on that field all summer, or very little water by, by the fall, but you'd ruin the field basically. And then you got kids that running out there with it on cleats. It would cost an enormous amount of money probably to restore that field. The damage would be so extensive. So we got to think about those kinds of things. And.
That's why there's a special review and approval. So it would be under certain conditions that might be acceptable to irrigate, right?
Yeah. That's a good point. Whereas you might distinguish something like that from a splash pad that isn't as, there's not going to be that kind of damage from, from non-use of water. It's more, well, we can maybe live without that for a period of time. But the fields are assets and you don't want to, you know, it's just like the main field at Old Townhouse. That field's a constant challenge to keep it in good condition because of the intensity of the use and the fact that people don't use it properly. When they play soccer, you're supposed to roll, rotate the goal mouths and all this. And people that do that have fields that are long lasting and in very good shape and don't cost a lot of money to maintain. Fields that are abused cost a lot of money to maintain over time. So I think we got to give that a little bit of thought. And maybe with public parks and recreation fields add, you know, to include the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School fields, again, on a case by case basis with, with approval.
And I appreciate the explanation. I mean, the, the, the fact that they're assets, you know, needs to be taken into consideration in terms of their, their value, but also the suggestion that in those cases where there may be a case that can be made to allow some watering that it be done during off-peak periods, because what we're trying to do is, is make sure that we have during peak usage adequate supply. And that's, that's the reality that we're dealing with now is that.
I think, I think wasn't it under the regulations, when watering was allowed, it was before nine and after five, weren't those the hours?
That was one of the categories.
Always want watering before nine.
And I think from my experience, I don't know about recently, but in years past, when I used to walk around the track at night, those sprinklers would come on. And it was definitely after five o'clock that they, D Y was using those sprinklers.
Yeah, it's at six thirty in the morning.
Is that, is that, yeah? So, but that's a good point.
Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And this is, this is well done.
I think in addition, in addition to the fact that they're assets, it's a safety issue. If people are falling and tripping. It would have been nice if the schools had come to somebody and asked permission to keep watering their fields. They didn't do that. They just ignored it. And that's, that's the troubling piece of it. First of all, say, I want to say thank you so much for the extra work that this all entailed. I know you guys are extremely busy and having to do this was just one more thing we put on your plate. But it was necessary and it's unfortunate. It's extremely important. Especially when it comes to protecting our drinking water and our ability to fight fires in the town. You mentioned a review board for those questionable uses. Who would that board be? Who would be making decisions as to whether or not it's appropriate for A to use it? Is it water commissioners?
Ben, we're the water commissioners.
Water commissioners.
I just want to be aware of that because, you know, obviously we don't want to be inundated either with.
Well, I think we would want to update the policy so that some of these decisions are, are made by you in advance. And then, then it would just be maybe myself or Jeff actually approving particular instances if given your, with your permission.
Okay. Yeah, just to kind of back up a little bit, I probably should have mentioned before, but the, the bylaw is something that while we want to get it in place, is only going to be changed at town meetings. So, you know, very periodically, whereas the policy is kind of more the administrative component to it. We could change that through the boards voted almost any board meeting. So that's where we want to have a lot of the details. This is, you know, meant to be very high level.
Okay, great. I was thrilled to see the place where you, one forty-two point eleven, where we are starting to register irrigation systems. That's just unfortunate. It's necessary. We have to know who has the irrigation systems. To Mike's point, we need to know whether or not they have an appropriate backflow device, and we also need to know if they have rain gauges. But I think that's a really great part of this bylaw.
Right. This establishes the authority for that. There's still a lot of work to do to develop the implementation.
Right, right. No, I appreciate that. Just as an aside, I was up in New Hampshire last weekend and they also were experiencing this drought condition. One of the things that they were doing was using like those political signs, but they were posted in all high level places for people to see. And I thought that was really good because that's what we were missing. We didn't really do a great job of getting word out to people. Certainly you tried. I'm not taking away it all, but we need visual cues for people to drive by constantly and pay attention to. And those types of signage would be capable of being adjusted depending on the level of emergency that we were dealing with. And it's not a terribly expensive thing. So I thought that was an interesting observation. But I think this is a great first draft and I appreciate the work that went into it. And let's see where we go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan Dorcas.
No questions specifically, just you've done a great job to start. I mean, there's an awful lot to digest in this. And unfortunately, I think we're going to need it next summer as well and all the summers to come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dorcas.
Let's hope not. I can tell you that doing some research on this, as we've been spending a lot of time, these do ebb and flow. So we do go through cycles where we're in very wet periods and then there'll be a couple of years of that and then we'll be in some dry periods. They do tend, unfortunately, right, they do tend to kind of lump together. So typically it's a couple of years in a row and then a wetter period. So I hope it's not every season going forward, but it could certainly be a few together.
Okay, Peter.
Under, under, you can't wash vehicles. I would specifically put in the word boats as well.
What's, what's section?
I'm on page one. Nonessential outdoor water uses is subject to mandatory restrictions, including irrigation of lawns via sprinklers. Washing of vehicles is the second bullet point. I would put boats in there as well.
Okay.
Page two. Under arts, this was brought up by Mark earlier. Through the Board of Selectment or its designee. Filling of privately owned outdoor pools. Why would that even be on there? That probably the least important thing I could think of for water use. Thoughts? Or am I just?
What's that, Peter?
This, it's on page two. It's the fourth bullet point under the following water uses is subject to review and approval by the town through its Board of Selectment or its designee.
Which bullet point?
The fourth one, filling of privately owned outdoor pools.
Okay.
If the board would like that, certainly could be removed. Again, ninety-eight percent of this is the model bylaw from D E P and that's in there, but it doesn't mean we have to adopt it.
Are your thoughts that, that that's important to have, to be able to do that in a, in a severe water emergency?
Well, I mean, people don't normally, I don't have a pool, by the way, but people don't normally fill a whole pool. They fill it in like May or around Memorial Day or early June, and then they just kind of add a little here and there, right? It's not generally a lot of water.
I'm assuming this would be like someone just built a pool and they want to fill it.
Many towns have a bylaw that you cannot use the water from the, from the public water system. You get it from, you get potable water from off Cape and bring it down. So I, in my opinion, that, that's, that's a better use.
What towns have that regulation?
Robbins Town.
Robbins Town.
Under this section, as we talked about before, that is the additional review and approval. So it doesn't have to be granted, even if it's in there.
Okay.
I'm going to break away just momentarily. I saw Mr. Sears standing there. Did you have something you wanted to enlighten us about?
Yeah, the new school is getting a, it has its own irrigation well for the fields. And I'm not sure, but the existing regional school may have another well. So I, I'll find out more about the second well, but I know there's a, that there's a new well going in with the new school. So that shouldn't impact town waters.
That new field that they're building right on the street is going to be fed by that irrigation well, and it's going to also feed some of the existing fields. I don't know if they have any other wells, but.
Yeah, I'll ask on Thursday when I'm at the meeting.
All right, thank you, Kurt. Yeah, there's these new facilities coming online. We got to give some consideration to. And as you said in your draft too, like when you're first starting up, like if the school's going to be starting up that new lawn in front that looks like a desert. You gotta, you gotta allow some latitude for that, you know? Anything that's planted new like that, whether it's seed or sod or anything else has to be constantly watered for a while till it takes.
That's that bullet point right, right above the pools is allowing for.
Right, during certain months.
Do you have something?
I got more. I was, my last thing, point was going to be private wells. Is, and there's nothing in here. Is, is there any, because it's all drawn from the same aquifer. Is, is there anything that you've seen in, in any other towns or anything like that that deal with private wells?
That's a great question. I am familiar with a town that's tackling this exact issue. It is something that D E P has indicated that can be regulated by the water commissioners. It could be reflected in here. Certainly, our recommendation is to adopt something as a first step and then maybe reflect based upon, you know, future town meetings, whether that should be incorporated or at what levels. But I am familiar with another Cape community that's looking at private wells and how to cover that in their bylaw. So it's, it's, it's definitely something that people are looking at. I wouldn't say it's widespread though. It's only, it's very few towns that have considered that.
We can't have many private wells in Yarmouth, can we?
Well, I don't think we have many at this, at this time, but as we enter into a period of more conservation types of measures, people will probably explore that.
Oh, you mean people driving, driving wells because of this?
Exactly.
Yeah, as our water cost prices go up, they may.
What would the cost be of doing something like that?
I don't know. I've never put one in. I don't have a lot of experience with irrigation systems specifically, but it would cost in the thousands. But I will tell you that when people irrigate on a regular basis on their lawns, that's a pretty high water bill anyway. So if they're looking to mitigate that, I think it's something people would look at.
Need one of those divining rods.
Yeah, I remember those.
Yeah, if I could just add, I would recommend Jeff Colby's recommendation, maybe to revisit that later. My, my own feeling is, is that the, the issue that we're wrestling with here, the challenge when we're confronted with a water emergency, our challenge is the capabilities of our system. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have an issue with the aquifer or if it's dropped to significant levels, although that's not something that we shouldn't be concerned about. Our problem is our system is constrained because of pollution and other matters that warrant us to take these measures to make sure that the supply is adequate to meet the demand. I think that's more or less where, where our challenges are. We may get to a point where, we may very well get to a point where we have to be concerned about the, the conditions of the aquifer itself, that it may be constrained. There may be a host of other reasons why that occurs, but I don't want people to think that somehow the issue here is we're drawing way too much water from the aquifer. Our issue is the, our ability to draw water. It's our system itself is compromised because of these other challenges. So I think Jeff's advice to maybe revisit this later, should we need to do it, makes sense. So those are my thoughts.
Right. I, I got, I got just a couple more very quick things. One forty-two point two, public health, safety and welfare. I'm, I'm just reading, you know, I have to look at it. I just read it to you. On, on the very last page, it, it, it says, it, it says that if somebody is really bad, a really bad person, we would shut off their water. Now, I've dealt with this in the past and people have sued towns for shutting off their water for health and safety. And, but what they've done is they put in, and I mentioned this before, a restrictor. So they would still get water, but it would be at, if they ran it twenty-four hours a day, they would get very little water. So they, they would put a restrictor right on, right on the street.
Yeah. And then you got problems of children and elderly people and people with diseases and people that are in chemotherapy. No thanks. I see enormous liability even going down that road.
And shutting people off is the last resort. We hope to never get to that.
I mean, if, if.
I, I, I think it's a, a, a health and, health and safety issue if, if you completely shut somebody's water off.
Even if they don't pay their bill?
Have, do we, do we have a plan right now to shut people's water if they don't pay their bill?
We have done that in the past, but not since COVID.
I mean, you, you're talking about no showers, no bathing, no flushing toilets. It's a real health and safety issue.
I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree. I'm just saying that in some communities, it's not uncommon to shut people off for not paying their water bill. So in this is, in this case, what's going to happen?
Not paying your bill, I think is distinguishable from using too much water to water your lawn.
Think about it. You're going to be getting fined on a fairly regular basis for each occurrence.
Violation is, is each day is an independent violation.
I agree.
Which is the case under most bylaws of any sort.
But it's not unusual in communities if you don't even pay your, those.
You get, you get to the third point, you got three hundred bucks a day. How many, how many days can you afford that? That's nine grand a month. That's a lot more money than a water bill.
But what happens though is I've seen this hap, I've had to address this issue in other communities where someone has, is confronted with that. They're not going to pay their fines or their violations, and then they're threatened with a shut off.
Put a lien on their house.
Well, they could certainly do that, but then you, you're dealing with the same question, the shut off.
It's, it's not an easy one.
I'm not suggesting that it is, but I think the language as written seems pretty reasonable to me.
No, I, again, I, I, I think this is great. It's a wonderful first, wonderful first start. And, and I, I think it's going to take very little tweaking to make this work very well. And I, I think that most of the comments made tonight will really, really help. And, and your explanations that you've come back with have been very helpful as well.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, Dan.
Just one quick follow up. I think Mark's point about what we're trying to protect here and address is the capacity and the health of our water distribution system. I think that's absolutely correct. My concern is that if we don't deal with the people that have private wells, there's a question of equity of the haves and the haves nots. And sometimes the people who have their own wells are perhaps more affluent. And that could be perceived wrongly by people in town. I'd like to at least see if there's language out there that you've, you've mentioned, you, other municipalities are, are beginning to deal with this. Is there at least possible language out there that we might look at?
There, there may be, but probably not in time for this article to go to the fall town meeting. The communities I'm familiar with are exactly where you are. They're still looking at that. It's going to take, and they're preparing for like town. looking at that. It's going to take, and they're preparing for like town meetings in the spring. So I don't think there's going to be anything that we have that's been adopted by another community. I just know that some are looking at it.
Okay. All right. That's reasonable. Thank you.
Yeah. If I can just help on that or speak to that point. When, when I worked in the town manager's office in Provincetown, we had a water supply, we had lack of supply, period. And we also had compromises to the aquifer, where the aquifer was only capable of delivering so much water. And if we drew more water, we were going to draw more saltwater intrusion on the sort of, in the lens. So we were forced to have to deal with some of these issues with wells. That's a very different situation. I hope that we never get to a point where the, the, the aquifer, the drinking water becomes so compromised that we will have to regulate other activities with respect to withdrawing water in the town. That's one of the reasons why the DEP is involved in the regulation of, of, of larger water supplies. That could have an impact. So I don't want people to think if they're following this conversation that others that are withdrawing water aren't regulated or undergoing some kind of scrutiny. They are. It's just not by the Yarmouth Water Department. It might most, may very well be if it's a fairly large quantity of water, it might very well be the DEP.
Right.
That is involved in scrutinizing.
Right. Ms. Chairman, a larger issue that I was trying, not necessarily that we're depleting the, the aquifer, but, but we clearly have had some problems with some wells. And if we lose some more pumping ability, you know, because another well or two goes offline, we may not have sufficient water to support. There may be plenty of water in the aquifer, but we may not have enough water to support, whether, whether there's a drought or not.
We've already taken remedial efforts to address those well issues.
Absolutely. But, but can you guarantee that, that well number XYZ is not going to go offline tomorrow? No. I mean, it's, it's unlikely, but, but we need to be ready for it.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't see how it computes with, with the situation that we're trying to address here with our bylaws.
Well, I, 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 I think it does. We don't necessarily have to have a drought in order to have a water emergency.
Oh, I agree.
Right. And that, that, that's my whole point. That, you know, it, as, you know, if we, if we as the water commissioners, the board of selectmen decide that there's a water emergency, you know, because wells have gone offline for, you know, temporarily or, you know, for a month or so, whatever, whatever it happens to be, you know, we need to put this, put this in effect. Because we can only pull X, X amount of gallons per day out of, out of our wells.
Yeah. I don't think we're, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we're speaking, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is us getting the business of regulating private wells. Um, I just think that's an area, if we, if we try to work that into this bylaw, I think we're, we're looking for trouble.
Right. I, I.
Yeah. I don't think we're ready. I don't think we have enough information to do it.
Yeah.
And again, on a cost basis, I do not foresee an explosion of wells simply, probably because with most people, they're not going to pay that kind of money for something like that. You're not asking them not to have water. You're asking them to conserve the water and use it more responsibly.
Yeah. I, I think Mr. Colby was quite clear that we do not have enough information to put anything about private wells in, in this one, at this time anyways. Um, I, I live with a private well there and actually not that expensive to have put in.
Okay. Somebody told me, and even though this isn't a public hearing, I allowed Mr. Sears to make a comment. Somebody told me Mr. Sullivan was on the screen. Is he still there?
Yes, and he has his hand up.
Let's, let's recognize him. Tom, do you have any comments? Any brief, quick, enlightening comments for us?
Hi, uh, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
There was a comment made by Mr. Colby that's got me very upset. And that's the comment that he just made in regards to, they have ways of checking in a private home or business by using the water system that's attached up right now with a computer system? Is that correct?
They can see what the volume of usage is. Sure. That's just a reading.
The reading, you remember, water meters in most places are inside the house. That I would constitute a consider, possible consideration of a wiretap. That I, I would object to that. And if they're doing it now, I hope they're not. And Mr. Colby, I'm watching. I can see you smirk. I do not think that they should be using that system. That was not what it was designed to do when we authorized it to come in our properties. It was just to get the water meeting. Now this could be used against the people of the town. I think the townspeople are going to be very upset when this gets out.
I'm not sure I follow your point. Are you, are you talking of, what aspect of this are you objecting to?
My objection is you've got, if they go into check on a person or a business to see if, what their water usage is, if it's too much or whatever, without the owner knowing about it, I believe that could be illegal.
I don't think they're going to walk around doing that, Tom. I mean, I, I.
Well, he just, Mr. Chairman.
I think my understanding is if there's somebody that's being complained about constantly, they say ABC Business, you go by there, or the house and the water's on all the time. Maybe they can validate whether that's worth pursuing by seeing what kind of water consumption there is.
But that's, yeah, but that's compiling evidence without the person's knowledge. Now, and that meter is in on their property. Okay? Now, how can that be done legally? Mr. Forrest brought up a good question about that. How can this actually be done legally? Another term can be used as spying.
All right. Tom, do you have any other criticisms of the bylaw or questions about it?
No, I'd just like to know when Mr. Colby's going to put in new water wells in the well fields that have been vacant for years behind the Mary J's Middle School. Instead of spending thousands of dollars trying to clean up the ones that are contaminated or shut down, why don't they put new wells in to offset the shortage? With that, I'll end my comments.
Okay. So you're for putting in additional wells where the school property was? I guess. Okay. So that's it. Let's, uh, let's move on.
That's all.
Very much, Laurie and Jeff. Come back to this in time, I'm sure, but it looks pretty good, at least based on the comments of the board. Um, so what is next? Where's my agenda? Here it is. Next we have is a, we're going to have a quick overview of the warrant for the special town meeting on November 15th.
Jump right in there?
Yeah. Before you jump right in, Mr. Chairman, I just want to commend the administrator for this spreadsheet that we got.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
This is very, very helpful.
Yeah. He said he was going to have a one-page, um, sheet on this, um, that people could refer to.
First time I've been on the board and seen something like this. Yeah. I think it's a huge help. So thank you.
Okay. So one.
Okay. The first thing that I want to do is, um, just go over the calendar and what the game plan is for the review on this town meeting. Um, just got the deadline last week for the submission of articles and we kind of give it a little extra effort so that we would be prepared with a complete draft, um, you know, as well as the use of funds sheet that has all the things. So, um, we could have three readings on the town meeting warrant that we proposed to just, um, go through the articles this evening. Doesn't require any votes. Um, and then at your next meeting next week, we'll have the second reading, um, go through then and then have a third reading. And at the third one, which would be at the, I think that's October 18, um, that would be the evening that you would vote to execute, um, and post the warrant. So it gives us a chance to, to go through and I think, you know, become a little more familiar and to, to give you an opportunity to consider all of the different, um, town meeting articles. And so just a little bit on the, um, use of funds sheet, it shows each article, even the ones that aren't financial, just listed right out. So you know what the, the title of the article is, what the total amount is. And then it, it also has the, the actual balances in free cash, the retained earnings and all the different accounts. And it shows at the bottom after town meeting, how much money that you have left. And so this is also helpful internally, working with, um, you know, the finance and the whole team. Um, and we're going to be meeting with the finance committee tomorrow night and talking about these things. In looking at the warrant, I want to call your attention to, um, we sent out, um, you know, real quickly last week was the first draft. And right now we're on the second draft. So what the second draft did is it cleaned up a lot of the articles and, um, the first draft had everything we received just automatically on there. And we went through and did some critical analysis, removed some of the articles. So, uh, there's a couple less articles and the second draft is a clean one. So, um, everyone should have a second draft and, and that's the one that, um, I'd, I'd like to go through. And, um, what I would do is just, um, I'll announce with a brief explanation, each of the articles. And, um, if I, I think if anyone has a question or a comment, you know, make it right as we go along and then we'll see if we can get through them. And, um, so I'll jump right in and it should follow exactly with the sheet with the yellow on it. They are companions. Article one is prior year bills. There's $712. Um, it's a DPW invoice to True Green Commercial, um, just a bill that wasn't here by the deadline. As you know, um, we're the first town in the Commonwealth to certify, um, our, our balance sheet, which we're very proud of. And so we don't have a lot of leeway on bills. And so I'm glad there's only one prior year bill. Um, article two is the fire, I mean, fire, the police training fire hydrant. Um, and that is a code requirement at the Sean Gannon Police Training Facility. We've planned this since last year. Um, and the code enforcement has given us till this town meeting to fund that. And so we've been planning on that. Um, article three is the allocation of the first year funds for the opioid settlement, 9,55568. Uh, we'll be getting that like amount for 10 years. And, um, this sets aside those funds for, um, substance abuse prevention in, in conjunction with the committee. And article four is a shortage in the DPW administration budget for townwide energy and fuel, um, fuel costs, as you know, have been through the roof this year. And, um, that covers that. Article five, um, is for additional costs for vehicle maintenance, which have been higher than normal as well. Uh, and there's an explanation there. They're down to, I think, 7,500 left. So vehicle maintenance is article five. Um, article six is for design and engineering funds for an odor control system at the Septage Facility. Um, that facility, you know, is still strong. Um, it has many years of useful life, but it doesn't contain any odor control. So they want to begin the design of that. Can I just ask a quick question on that? Absolutely. The language strikes me as a little funny. Investigating and developing a recommendation for design. It's not like you're asking for money for design, but. Right. It's a preliminary design. Okay. It is not the, um, the bid documents, but what it is, is the, um, identification of the, the concepts to select one that will work. And then from there, it would go into the final design phase and then the implementation. So there's really only 25,000. It's more of a concept study. Yeah. I just, I'd never seen language like that before.
Study.
Okay.
All right. What is your answer?
So that's odor control. And then, um, seven is the, uh, capital expenses in the Septage Division for replacing the three vehicle scales at the Septage Treatment Facility. And, um, that's been planned for some time and they need to move that ahead now. Um, 400,000. And then we get into a couple of articles that relate to, um, the board's votes to file the SRF loans on some of the water projects. And the temporary PFAS treatment system is article eight, estimated at 5 million through an SRF loan. So, um, that's authorized under article eight. And then article nine is a lead service inventory.
Can we, can we stop on article eight for a second?
Absolutely.
That's okay. Mr. Chairman. Um, and Jeff, why are we calling, why are we referring to this as temporary PFAS treatment?
This is the system that is not the permanent solution.
This would be the mobile operation?
Mobile operation. In fact, in the capital budget, we had some good pictures of what those look like in other communities.
I think it would be better to call it a mobile?
Maybe. Yeah. It could be. It's, it's, it's not, it's something we can reuse. I guess that's probably where the concern is with temporary.
I think it, I think it sounds better if it's mobile. That way people know that we've got a unit that we can transport and utilize in other areas where it says temporary. It looks like we're spending a ton of money and then.
Initially it's for wells four and five, but we can move it to others when we build permanent solutions. So.
Yeah. I would just recommend temporary, I think conveys the wrong message of what you're trying to do. I would, I would recommend.
Why don't you, you could just say temporary and mobile or temporary and portable PFAS treatment. But it is temporary because it's going to not be a permanent solution to that particular well.
Correct.
So we got to keep temporary in there because that's all it is.
Well, for that well.
I want to add temporary and mo, and mobile. That'd be fine. Right? Because it's both temporary and portable.
I'm, I'm just trying to be helpful. I call it what you want.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll look at that and, and maybe come up with an interesting new title for your next reading.
No, I, I understand what's being conveyed here. For, for wells four and five, we're hopeful that, that it's not a, and a permanent problem, that we want to treat those wells for a period of time. Get, I get it.
No, I think there's more than that. I think there's more than that. I don't think it's a temporary solution either. I mean, a permanent solution.
That you've got a system here that you're probably going to be able to use in other wells that get contaminated. So we've been talking about a mobile system. That's, that's all I'm suggesting. If it's a mobile system, why don't I just call it that?
How about mobile reusable, uh, system, something like that?
Yep.
That sounds a lot better, I think.
I just want the board to be aware. It's not the permanent solution. We'll have to come back for a permanent fix solution, but.
In other words, just to get, make sure I'm, I'm understanding this correctly. No matter how long you use that system at a particular well, it's not going to provide a permanent solution to those, that well's problems, correct?
If you permanently located it there and it didn't move.
No, but it's not designed for that, is it? Is it, it's not designed for a permanent fix, is it?
It could be used indefinitely. I mean, there is, uh, maintenance is required of the canisters, but it could be used indefinitely.
Yeah. Permanent system, you're building a, a building, a structure, a facility. It's not on a mobile platform. It's set up so that it's literally.
House.
You get footings. You got, you know, a, a very strong building around it, surrounding it and, uh.
I understand why, why he called it temporary. It, it, it is because there is a permanent on, on the way. And, and, and I think what Jeff's trying to avoid is.
Oh, I see.
Comes in with the permanent. So, oh, we already did that. Well, no, we just did the temporary one that's mobile and we're going to use that in other areas as needed. But in addition, we've got a permanent and, and we think that's the future.
It will be funded in the spring.
Permanent. Yeah.
So what, what about, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, interim solution?
Say the interim?
In term. That's usually, it's in between.
I think that's a good, good way to put it.
Well, that's what it is.
I hear what you're saying. No, but I think the discussion is clarified exactly, at least for me, at least, at least clarified what we're doing here. So, um, the more we can.
I think I would like to see those words added and mobile so that people understand this can be, uh, even though it's a temporary, it's not, like you said, a permanent housed system. It can be relocated from time to time as, as the need directs. So let's for now at least consider to say it's a temporary and mobile PFAS treatment system.
Make that clear in the explanation. That's all.
All right. Article nine?
Article nine is the lead service inventory. That's, uh, another SRF application. Um, you'll see we listed that as a loan, but it's a strange type of loan that, um, is slated to have permanent forgiveness. So, um, we need to get the loan portions of that.
Principal forgiveness associated with that, right? But it's a loan.
So that's to do an inventory of all the lead service lines for the water system, which is a. which is a critical piece, 455,000.
I don't even think it mentions water in the article. Can you find a way to work the, the term water in there?
How about lead water service?
Yeah, I think you, you want to make it clear in the explanation that.
Yeah, a lead service.
The goal here is to remove lead from service lines.
Because the police will give you a lead service.
And it does say the water, the water division proposes to complete a lead service line inventory in the explanation.
Yeah, you know, I generally don't like articles that we have to connect the dots yourself, you have to kind of piece things together. It's nice if it just explains that we have water service, we have customers with service lines that may be impacted by lead. It's, it can be easily said in the explanation. And I know, I know, I know I'm dragging this out and I apologize. I know this was all about just getting the articles up for discussion.
This is great.
We can have more fine tuning later.
Are you proposing, Mark, after replacement plan to say from existing service lines?
That's what we're talking about.
Of existing water service lines?
I think there needs to be some clarity there. Because when you, if I'm a, you know, if I'm just looking at this and putting myself in the position of just an average voter, lead service inventory, to me, it means that we're inventorying lead service. It doesn't, even though, yes, you can connect, it's a water division article and it's public works related, you, you have to do guesswork just to make sure. You know, so we just need some clarity there.
Before, you know.
I always believe the fewer questions you need to provoke on a town meeting floor, the better.
Mr. Whit, now, Jeff also made the comment that this is a loan, a forgivable loan. You said just principal? Do you have to, interest is forgiven as well or just?
If it's a 0% SRF loan and then they forgive the principal, you're in good shape.
Doesn't say that. Doesn't say that.
What if, just, just to kind of nail down Mark's concern, what if after the word replacement plan, we added the words of and for existing water service lines?
Perfect.
So it would read, for the purpose of completing a lead service inventory and replacement plan of and for existing water service lines, including all expenses incidental and related there too. I think that, Mark, would give voters more information as to what this article's for.
Yeah.
I think that's a good catch, I really do, because otherwise it's kind of vague. And then as Dorkus said, when you get into the explanation, you get a little bit more reinforcement because it references a water division. So I think we'd be good with that in addition.
And article 10 is for strategic planning and developing a leadership development program in the fire department. That's article 10.
And 10's out of their revolving fund, right?
And article 11 is the fire department capital that they need to move ahead during the fall. And it's to provide matching grants, matching sums for two substantial federal grants. One is the replacement of a forestry firefighting vehicle for 510,000. And the second one is the, they call them extractors, gear, extractors and dryers, highly specialized equipment that cleans the firefighting equipment from all of the, you know, so fires. And, and that's, that's over 564,000 for that equipment.
What's that forestry 49?
That is a forestry firefighting vehicle, like the proverbial brush truck. And, and you know, the one that we have is ancient and unreliable. And so this updates that with modern equipment from a grant.
So replacing forestry 49 means getting a new brush truck?
Correct.
There may be some value in using that in there. Does that, again, the, the simpler, the easier. I, I remember, I know this is a first cut, but I'm glad you caught that and I'm glad you explained that. I think if that were in there, that would be a big help.
And hopefully we'll, we'll have a picture of it.
There you go.
That we'll put up.
I mean, just for, just for a placeholder, after replace forestry 49, you could put a dash and say new brush truck.
Right.
And then we'll see if we can improve on that.
Excellent. Okay, so that's 11. And, and article 12 is what's become an, an annual article that.
It's the Bill Scott article.
What, what we do.
Which one?
We're, we're going to, we're going to take the equivalent amounts that we collected in the short-term rental revenue because the new law didn't kick in.
Right.
For last year. And also 300,000 from the septic host fee and another $6,407.70 from the septic betterment for a total of 1.821 that goes directly into the wastewater enterprise fund. And that'll give us about three and a half million in that fund consistent with our pre-funding program.
Let me ask you a question on that 1.514 mil number. Is that based on the previous 75% dedication of that revenue? Or is that in addition, cutting into that other 25%?
Yeah, we put in 100% of what we collected last year.
We did.
Right. So that, and then 1.5 is all of it.
So 1.5 is 100%.
So that's article 12. Now, article 13 is an acceptance statute that we worked out, we have our betterment consultants that are studying the betterment program. And one thing that we thought would be very helpful to local businesses and residents is to extend the betterment period to not exceed 30 years, which will be, together with the financing strategies that we're looking at, which are 30-year financing strategies. And it normally, the betterment would be a 20-year. So you'd have a lot of upfront payment. This, this allows people to make it go over 30 years. And the interest rate, I think, on those is very low as well. So that will be a big help to folks. So and that's chapter 83, section 15D.
This is just authorization. There's no financial commitment at this point.
No, all it does, and it does not set betterments, the betterments have to all be adopted in accordance with Mass General Laws, chapter 80. And the Board of Selectmen gets to set the rate or the, how long the payback period is. And what this does is it gives you an additional arrow in your quiver to go up to 30, because otherwise you'd be stuck at 20. So you can do up to 30. And article 14 is to set aside the sums of funds for the PEG expenses. And I, I just want to point out that with our new cable contract and the, which starts in November, and the new law that you adopted last year, we'll be setting aside funds directly from that cable contract for the PEG, which will help in the town's adoption of an overall communication plan, as is the high priority of the Board of Selectmen. And what, what this article does is it, it continues and expands our PEG program for the current year. And through these funds, we will be able to, number one, keep the government program, I mean, let's do the public, keep the public program that's done through Cape Media rolling forward. And it will enable us to approximately double the government communication piece for cable so that, that we can have a stronger communication program there. But it is still not the final, we, we hope to look toward the budget utilizing the funds from the new cable contract for the implementation of a more global communication program.
If I could just make a, a brief suggestion, it may be, it might be helpful to reference that, for those that might not know, we're referring to channels 18 and channel, I think, 22. Rather than figure that out, I would just suggest in the explanation that we make references to the channels that we're using to transmit government programming and public access programming. And I'm, and I'm glad to hear you say that we have, we have to put together a communications game plan.
Absolutely.
Right.
Bob, and going back to article, article 13, there's a, there's obviously, you said there's a loan, loan to the, to the betterment payer. No rates and terms have been done outside of it can be, can be up to 30 years?
Correct. What, all, all that this article does is it accepts the statute that enables you to contemplate betterments up to a 30-year period.
Or put it another way, in the absence of this article, the betterment period could not exceed 20 years. This gives you the flexibility of going from 20 to 30.
Yeah, so, but, but.
But doesn't bind you to anything.
Okay, but, so, but at this point, if, I'm thinking of questions at town meeting, that, that no discussion about what interest rates are going to be on, on these betterments and stuff. Okay, excellent. Yeah, I, I've always dealt with 20 years on, on betterment. So this is, this is, this is nice for some of the business owners and stuff.
This just gives you more flexibility.
Correct.
And I think you're going to need it.
Yeah, with the rates of everything these days, it's going to come in very importantly. All right, so we did 14. 15 is the Maticke's Middle School utilization study.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I would just recommend that the article be shortened significantly and, and allow the explanation to sort of carry the day in that. I, I would make that as brief as it possible. I would mention the fact that the first sentence is fine, the second sentence, I would mention that there is envisioned a committee that will make specific recommendations to the Board of Selectmen and to town meeting. And then beyond that, I'd say very little. And I would work, I would work some of that into the explanation.
Let us look at the, the wording. Excellent point.
Because, because again, you're putting that language in the article. And I think I have found from my own experience, just in other municipal governments, that the study articles, the briefer they are and just concise in terms of goals, the better off you are. You may want to tweak things, you may, there may be a need. It, it's just overly prescriptive. And I think you want to give the committee, the select board and the consultants a, a certain amount of freedom. So that would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is just.
It's very informative. So.
It's incredibly informative.
Take a shorter article, I'm used to shorter articles too. So let's, let, let us work on that and come back.
Go look at it, yeah.
Okay, and then we get to article 16 is a recreation capital assessment and improvement plan. So that's working with the Recreation Commission and Department to analyze the status of our recreational facilities, which is another item that is directly building upon the goals of the Board of Selectmen for recreational opportunities.
What actually is this funding?
This is funding a study of all of the recreational areas and what improvements that we need and, and matching them up with the programs that we want to run. And then developing a, a plan for improving them that would be prioritized. Bill?
For me, it, it's looking at the condition and the capacity. So when you talk about capacity, do we have enough fields, you know, for the number of leagues we have?
I see.
Do we have enough playgrounds? And then obviously the condition. And then you create capital. So it's condition, capacity, capital, sort of three Cs, that is, you create specific improvements programs to go over that. The, the idea is that you would have a regular investment in recreation that is more level than jumping up and down.
Are you envisioning a consultant to give you this information?
Yeah, you would get a consultant for this. And what they usually do is you would build off the, you build off the recreation master plan. But then from there, there are demographic and other analysis that you do to determine the capacity issues. And then condition issues.
Bill, I'm just curious, what was the origin? How did this article originate? What was the impetus behind it?
I think in, in talking to the Recreation Director, it's really about just building that consistent investment over all of the assets so that there are places that need work and then there are other places that, you know, work is being done. And I think it's really to be able to look out five years and say, we're going to do this at this park and this at this park. That, you know, there are parks that need parking lot lighting and things like that. Obviously, you could go around and sort of backfill all those needs, but it's better to look at it as an overall investment than the next.
Does it include beaches or would they be considered a, a separate and apart from this?
I think beaches or, for lack of a better phrase, as much of a retail asset in terms of inviting people. So you could involve beaches, but that's a different paradigm in terms of a study. So when you do ball fields, you're basically.
So that'd be different, right?
I mean, you could involve beaches, but.
How about Dennis Pond?
Yeah, that should be in part of this. So it goes to capacity and use. So do we have a big enough parking lot? How many people visit there? How many people do we anticipate? League play is, so I've done one of these in another community. And we got all the leagues together and said, what are your schedules? And found out that their fields were just being overused. And, you know, then do we need additional fields to address those capacity issues? So.
Well, I, I can tell you one thing and just from experience, and that is that if you look at the websites of some of these towns that have really, really nice fields, some of these wealthier Boston suburbs.
Yeah.
They have very strict rules that govern these fields. Like if it's rainy and soggy, you can't practice where the cleats are going to pick up the turf.
Right.
They don't want you practicing on, on the really pristine areas that where they play games, you practice more on. And it all makes sense. You don't have to run a soccer practice on, you know, your more, your nicest field that you use for games. The other thing is, they say a lot, the goal mouths get rotted out something fierce in soccer because they don't, they don't rotate them. The high school used to do a good job on that when they used to let us play. Every, every spring you went there, they, they reconfigured the fields. So the gold mouth areas were different. There's ways of taking care of these fields as well. And I don't think, I mean, there's a, at least based on when I was heavily involved in coaching, I don't think they did a very good job compared to some of these other communities. In terms of A, having rules and B, educating the, the users of the fields and C, enforcing the rules.
And the, I mean, that's it, sometimes we'll have fields that they use, that they put in fallow, that they don't use them and they let them come back. And then you use them as a practice field.
Yeah.
The other thing this will do is it'll give you the opportunity to get a park and sort of field grants, need lead time, they need the plans, you know, pretty close to being done. So this will give you an outlook and say, we could go after this money for this project in a few years.
I think this could result in some grant money?
I think so, because what it does is it doesn't mean that you're rushing around trying to put a grant together as you're bringing something in that isn't real, you know, isn't part of that overall plan. So if you know three years out that you're going to be looking at a particular improvement that is eligible, then you'll start ramping up the engineering and get yourself to a position where you're, you know, eligible for the grant. And then combined with CPA, you're not using as much CPA money if you're going outside for, for money also.
Last question, if, if the Maticke's use down the road was some kind of a combined use, and, and it could be housing in fields, municipal in field, whatever it is, would this study also take into consideration the potential use of those fields at Maticke's?
So that, I mean, that's a good example. What you would do in this type of study is you would figure out where you have capacity shortfalls based on. capacity shortfalls based on types of leagues, whether it be soccer, lacrosse, baseball, rectangular versus diamonds. And then you would do an inventory of land that's available to overcome that. A lot of people are going to turf fields, artificial turf fields that play multiple sports through this, so that you can, you don't wear them out. So you can do lacrosse, soccer, you know, and other rectangular sports and make up for the fact that you might need three or four fields for that. So i- it would lead into Matickees, and hopefully we can run these in parallel. But it would tell you, where are you in the relationship of having enough fields for the teams that you put out there in the leagues? And typically, you create a steering committee from the leagues, and the unique aspect is some of the leagues have DY situations, but most of the players, I believe, are from Yarmouth, so.
Yeah, we have a lot of a lot of combined, like, the soccer league is YD, it's combined, it's combined.
YD, okay.
Years ago, they did have separate leagues, but they combined them. And that meeting was really, I, I was at it, it was really controversial. You, you think, they're just across the bridge, you'd think they were like from different continents, you know? Our kids are going to come across and, and, you know, practice at the Yarmouth Fields. It was, it was a very controversial meeting, but they ultimately saw the benefit of doing it, and it did strengthen the leagues, and it was a good move. That's interesting that this is coming up. I've, I've been involved in recreation most of my adult life, and I've never seen any, anybody take this kind of a look at it. Interesting.
I think, if I can just.
Yeah.
Couple of comments. I, I think this can be helpful in meeting our state requirements for an open space and recreation plan.
Well, the open space and recreation plan is going to tell you from SCORP, which is a sort of demographic guidance on how many fields you need. So that's a good idea as to, it'll inventory all of your open space and your recreational assets. It doesn't delve into as much the financing, the sequencing, the actual.
Well, this will go beyond essentially what's required. But it would also check the box in terms of our having an updated plan?
It would, it would take all the information from that, inventories and everything else, and yeah.
Because if we have an approved updated plan, a plan that's been approved by the state, it opens the door to a variety of funding options, doesn't it?
PARC especially, yeah, P-A-R-C.
All right, so we're going to go to golf capital.
Okay, Article seventeen, golf capital. I do want to point out that the lion's share that is directly associated with the infrastructure required to fully use the reclaimed water from the wastewater plant for the irrigation over at Bayberry Hills, so I think that's a very wise move. It's been sometime in the works. And that's all from retained earnings. And Article eighteen is the water supply conservation.
I got a question on the, on the, on the recreation. Would that also cover the sailing folks?
The, it could. That's, that's more programmatic and asset-based, but it could, yeah.
Well, your fields are assets too.
Well, not ones you sit in, but.
Okay.
But you're right, it could cover that. And as Bob said, we, we want to do it for a programmatic approach, so if we offer these programs and want to offer more programs, do we have the facilities to carry them?
And, and they're studying the sailing program independent of this. I mean, there's a big issue with the type of vessels, the, how the program works, and it may very well be that they want to, you know, keep some of the older vessels as a historical type of a system, but, but there's a, a lot of newer vessels that are lighter weight, easier to access, that they could use to expand that program. I don't know what the final decision-making is going to be there, but we just had a big, huge meeting on, on the sailing and what is the potential future of that program. The idea is that I think the recreation would like to see it continue and expand. But they're somewhat limited by the equipment and what the manpower requirements are to operate the program. So I know they're looking at it now, and so we should hear a lot more over the next year on sailing.
It might be in our best interest to partner with another agency to take care of that for the town, i.e. Sail Cape Cod, for instance.
Yeah.
I remember one time that was a really strong program. They had these laser sailing racing programs and everything else.
Great program.
Okay, so most of this, you said, is going to be for the transfer pipe, right, from wastewater?
So that'll help keep that pond filled.
Bayberry?
Yes.
So this water's coming from the treatment plant to Bayberry, that's the idea?
Correct, and they'll maintain their retention pond used for irrigation and, you know, without taxing the aquifer.
All right.
And then Article eighteen is the water supply conservation and emergencies bylaw.
Which we've already reviewed, so we're on to nineteen.
Saves us a couple of pages right there, and I'm going to jump to page twelve in your warrant. And Article nineteen is the open space acquisition for nine point six acres on Higgins Crow Road. And there's a combination of community preservation water funds and the three hundred thousand dollar water supply protection grant.
That's the one we just
Yes, and we're.
Included.
Still working on getting the agreement signed on that, it's up at town council, but, you know, we have a, a meeting.
We should be okay by town meeting, right, with the agreement?
Absolutely. I, I hope to be okay by this week. I'm like, where's my agreement? But thanks to, to Mike for his expertise on bringing that home. And then Article twenty is the community preservation from historic reserves, and this is the next phase of rehab engineering for the Taylor Bray Farm. So that we're looking forward to very much. Twenty, and then twenty-one is to endorse the Board of Selectmen's appointment of a resident to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Mid Cape Ice Arena, Inc. We talked about that, I think, last meeting. Article twenty-two is the zoning bylaw for the Village Center Overlay District that was voted by the Planning Board, and we have tentatively set a meeting on October eighteen with the Planning Board prior to your execution of the warrant to discuss the details of the zoning, so that'll be upcoming. And then.
While, while we're on that, on the ADU, I think it might be a good idea to sort of be prepared to kind of get into the weeds a little bit, because we do have a current ADU. So I think it might be helpful to understand what the distinction is, what we're trying to do. Hopefully, that thing can give us some detail in terms of how.
Do you want to get a presentation on that from the Planning Board?
Yeah, I think we need to get.
We're gonna, we're gonna meet with the Planning Board on the eighteenth. There's two articles. There's, they submitted the Village Center Overlay District. That's Article twenty-two. Article twenty-three, as Mark indicates, is a zoning petition article. So this was not submitted by the Planning Board, it was submitted by petition, and it's for creating accessory dwelling units by right. So read that through, there's a lot to that. There, there is already a bylaw on the books, and we're gonna, what I need is the approval of the Board of Selectmen appropriate to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section five. We have fourteen days of the receipt of this petition, which we've gone by seven days to submit it to the Planning Board for review. So that way, they'll be ready to, on the eighteenth, come and discuss it. So I, I'd like to get a vote to submit the petition article to the Planning Board for review for our records.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously?
We're going to have the petitioner come in also, all right?
No, the Planning Board will come in, they'll review it and come in.
Just the Planning Board, we were not, you don't want to have the petitioner?
Just, the petitioner will come at some point when we have to develop our recommendations. We will hear from them.
Okay.
But if the Planning Board's going to come in and give us a presentation on one thing, it might, it might not be a bad idea just to hear from them on the other top.
Can we go back to Article twenty-two for a second, please? The village overlay district was something that we spent a tremendous amount of time and energy on previously, coming up with that plan, working with a consultant, and part of what I would like to hear from the Planning Board is why they're recommending the changes. I mean, quite frankly, I, I thought we felt we really did a great job of that village overlay district.
Well, they are going to, they are going to come in on that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm giving heads up, I want to know.
They say they're minor, so I don't think they're throwing the baby out, that's what they're, they're pointing.
Not that minor.
So they're going to come in on twenty-two and twenty-three, correct?
Correct.
I'd like to, obviously, do have those done at the same time.
I'm just, would like a heads up from them, you know, like, what was the rationale? I mean, there, there was all kinds of rationale first on how to do the housing.
You're going to get that opportunity. They're going to be sitting right there.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, give them a heads up, because.
You take my time.
Okay, thank you, because I am going to use it and then some.
Not all of it, some of it.
But who is the petitioner on twenty-three?
I have a.
Good question.
What's the, yeah, what's the name?
There's no, no name.
Any signatures on it?
Scott LaJoy. I see Sarah Cole's name on it. So those are the two individuals. Sarah's an attorney, but she's also been on the Finance Committee. And I, I mean, the name that I had heard is that Jim Saban was also supporting it as well. So, but I don't see him on the petition.
All right, is anybody, um.
Well, yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a, a, a point. I had raised this earlier that I'm interested in seeing an article for, I, I thought it was for this town meeting, but, you know, I know people get busy and some things fall through the cracks, but I had asked before that we consider an article to change the select board to, you know, the Board of Selectmen to the term select board, as is what is happening, what we're seeing, the trend in virtually every other municipality, and I didn't see that in the warrant. Maybe it's best i- if, if we can't do it in the fall, at least have that discussion for the Springtown meeting. Is that?
Because we were supposed to get a presentation on what needed to be adjusted.
Yeah, exactly, and we sort of, we sort of missed the boat on that one, so. You remember that discussion?
We discussed it, but it was.
We didn't, you didn't get enough direction?
To do it. You know, it was, it was discussed, it would be a good idea, and then some people said it would be a bad idea.
Then what I, what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is at least get at the board on record that it would like to have a proposal and a draft article for the Springtown meeting in changing the, the board. Is that?
That's fine.
So I'm making that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
I mean, if you want us to work on it, we could have an article for you probably for next week. At least I could.
Is there time to do something for this?
I mean, the, for everyone else, it's, we're past the deadline, but the Board of Selectmen, it's the Board of Selectmen's warrant, so if you vote to put something on, you can put something on. But you can't get.
I'd rather put it on the spring. We'll have a meeting about it, get some public input.
I'm, I'm fine, long as it gets on the warrant.
Yeah.
For either the fall or the spring.
Where we have it, and.
So let's.
Do it in the spring, but have, but have some public session on it.
Okay.
We'll do, got it.
You may find that there's just not a lot of community interest either way, and it's, I don't know.
I've had several requests, so, yeah, and so I used to judge in the congressional office if I got four pieces of mail on something, that usually meant that they represented a larger part of the community, and I've heard from several people.
We're going to move to Board and Committee. Do you have some stuff for us, Dorcas?
I do, starting with the Recreation Commission. For an opening of a one regular position, three-year unexpired term to run through July of 2023, recommend to appoint Lauren Villa as a regular member to the Town of Yarmouth Recreation Commission. The appointment is to fill the unexpired three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So that carries unanimously.
On the Community Housing Committee, we're talking about three different individuals. Should I name all three at, at once, or why don't we do it individually?
One at a time, yeah.
That's what I thought would be better. Okay. So for an opening of a regular position, a three-year unexpired term, recommend to appoint Drew Kraus to fill the regular unexpired term on the Community Housing Committee. This term will run through January 2024.
We have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That's unanimous vote, next.
We have another opening of a regular position, and the recommendation is to appoint Marcia Bissell to fill the regular unexpired term on Community Housing Committee. The term is effective December thirty-first, 2022, and will run through January 2024. We have a pending resignation from the committee currently that will go into effect on January first, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That carries unanimously. Next one, Dorcas?
An alternate position, recommendation to appoint Myra Sushenitz as an alternate member to the Community Housing Committee. The appointment is for a one-year term, which will run through January of 2024.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It also carries unanimously. So all three of those appointments in the recreation appointment were by unanimous vote? Approval of minutes of March first of 2022.
Motion to approve March first, 2022 minutes.
We have a second? Do we have a second?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
I abstain, Mr. Chairman.
We have one abstention, four in favor. Mark, you in favor? You on a vote?
Yep.
Okay. So those are approved by a four zero one vote. And that leaves us with the upcoming agenda review, which is October fourth.
Next week.
Hearing for underground storage tanks for Kobia Enterprises, position request, mental health clinician in the Police Department, Fall River, Fall, for Fall Town Meeting Warrant Review for the second time. Anything else?
Excuse me, when are we expecting the Planning Board to come in?
The eighteenth, I heard.
October eighteen.
Okay.
And, and that, that's being set up now.
When do we have to make our decisions to approve?
October eighteen. So we've got, we've got another review next week, and then the final review on October eighteen.
So we vote on the warrant on the eighteenth, right?
Correct.
That doesn't really leave room for the petitioner to come in.
We, we could try to get the petitioner in on the fourth, if you'd like.
Looks like you have time on the fourth.
Yeah, okay.
Why, why couldn't the petitioners come in the same night as the Planning Board?
You'd do that too.
I know.
If they, if they agree with their recommendation, that's all they got to say. If they disagree, they can point to the specifics of, let's put them in the same night.
So both on the eighteenth?
Yeah.
So it'll be zoning.
Invite them. Whether they come or they want to rely on the Planning Board will remain to be seen. I guess that depends upon what the Planning Board does, and.
Might be the same people.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, FinCom will be looking at the warrant tomorrow night with the Town Administrator, and then on the fifth. So we should have a report in by about the fourteenth or so, before the eighteenth.
So we'll be hearing from the planning board, probably on the 18th as well?
Well, FinCom will have its report done. So when you're on the 18th, you'll have all the recommendations from the Finance Committee.
But they won't be making them probably until around the 14th, right?
Um, we can make them sooner. They, they're meeting on the 28th and the 5th, and then they'll make them after the 5th.
Okay.
And we're actually trying to get capital to make recommendations on the capital ones. It's unusual when we have Fall Town Meeting, but we've got a new system in place, so we might have that also.
Anybody else?
Nope.
I'm sure all this stuff will come up. It always does. So we'll keep you posted. Individual items. Mark?
Nope.
Dan?
Just quickly, would it be possible, when we have public comment and somebody asks a question, we don't want to get into a process of answering them that night, but we do want to respond so that they feel like they're being heard. So there was a question tonight about what, what the process is about engaging a consultant. Can we just put something generally together on that?
I think that's a good idea. And, and just have a, you know, it should be five, 10 minutes. What happens, what, what's the criteria, what goes into the decision-making? I'm sure it's gonna differ from consultant to consultant, and also on the, the scope and importance of the project. Somebody mentioned, and I don't know if it was in public comment, but, and it was a good comment, I thought, get a update on it from the Drive-In Utilization Committee.
They're meeting tomorrow night, actually.
That would be good to get them, not necessarily for the next meeting, but to get an update on where we stand with them, with the Riverwalk Project.
And, oh, just a follow-up. Are we gonna attempt to draft a letter to Comcast about that, that next stage? Do we do it now? Do we wait? It seems kind of premature at this point.
Yeah. And, you know, the only thing I, I can tell you is, is that was a huge bone of contention in this licensing. And, you know, they, they came at that, they, you know, that they were saying they didn't want to close the office, but they didn't want to be required to have it because it was not their business plan. And, and we fought them. I wanted that in, just period. But the best we could do, and remember, we talked about this months ago, is that we, we felt is, is if they were required for the first five years, that would sort of get us over the hump, and they wouldn't, they wouldn't close the thing. So, you know, we've got a minimum of five years of our local office. And the thing was, is that the way our office is constituted, it's sort of their hub. They'd have a hard time closing it. I don't think that they, they didn't seek to close it. And the, I, I guess the idea is whether they would try to lump us in with Hyannis.
I thought a couple of years ago, they did try to close it. And, of course, we were concerned about the vehicles and everything that goes with that. But, um, no, I mean.
Well, I think you're right. But the, the, this particular contract, the beginning of negotiation started a long time ago. This thing, who, you know, the negotiators have made this a career. You know, they've been at it this way too long. And that was an issue right from the very beginning. So.
Thank you for getting that down.
And, and Dan, clearly, what, if you talk to Comcast on the phone, they want you to go to their website. They don't want you to deal with a person at all. I mean, it's, you know, if you got a problem with some of your equipment, what?
I hate to say it, but they're brutal. I mean, talk about customer service. I'm so glad that you raised that issue. It's.
No, they're horrible, at best.
Just finally, we talked earlier this evening about, could we get possibly a first draft of a letter to DOT about the situation that we're?
Yeah, I, listen, I'll, I've got it on my list as a high priority. We'll get something to you. It won't be tomorrow, but I'm working on it.
And then also, and again, you're gonna need some time, but also to address the issue that came before us tonight, to get an inventory of the signs and start formulating a response to.
Sketch plan.
That, that's a, that's a nightmare. It's a real nightmare.
Awesome.
I'm surprised they didn't put a bus stop there, you know? I really am. I expect to see a Greyhound bus stop or something. I didn't expect that. That's what it looked like.
Yeah, it was pretty brutal. Okay, my turn?
It is.
Uh, the airport. I, I keep worrying that that environmental impact open door is gonna come up and shut, and we're not gonna have, cutting our chance in there.
No, we're on top of that. I, I was just in conversation with Ron Price from QED, and, you know, we're, we're asking him, he's writing us a letter on, on some of the feedback for the, the new runway project. And also, we're on top of that, we think in October they're gonna have that, we think the opening of the environmental assessment comment period. So we're not, you know, we've been bird dogging that. I don't think we're gonna miss it.
Great. And the other, very timely, having the planning board coming on the 18th, because I want to bring up the comprehensive plan for town. I mean, I, I don't want that to slip away. To me, that's a critical item. And, and we did, if I remember correctly, approve a town meeting funding for them?
It's funded.
Okay.
It's funded. And, um.
We just haven't been briefed on it.
Yeah. I'd like to have an update on that as well. Thank you.
Peter?
Um, I'd like to appeal the historic district denial of the flags on Route 6A in Yarmouth Port. I'd like to get that on, on as a discussion item. Mr. Britnow wrote us a very unhappy memo last week about the escalating cost of the sewer. I think that should be discussed. And lastly, are we ever gonna hear from the Mass Department of Transportation on their Route 28 plans?
Okay, I, I'm just gonna briefly address one piece of it, and that is on the cost overruns on the treatment plan. Mark had contacted me about that, wanted to get something on the agenda as soon as we could. And I had a discussion with Bob about it, and he had contacted the consultants to try to get some, some concrete answers as to how they arrived at these numbers and what the specific driving forces of the cost overruns were. And we decided after discussing it, it would make a lot more sense to get that information in and bring it before the board, so that the board doesn't just get to ask a lot of questions for the consultants to go back and address at a later point in time. But the board can ask questions and hopefully get some answers.
Right.
We're gathering information and working with finance to see if there's a recalibration of the overall model. And we've got the Betterment Consultants on it, too. So we get hit with this escalation, it's like 45 million, you know, and it wasn't factored into your financing plan, you know, and it's so, it's gonna take a little work to.
Yeah. Kim has a big surprise, and it's gonna take a lot of work to delve into the specifics of it.
Right. Mike, thank you. I, that, that makes a whole lot of sense to me. Get as much information as we can before, before we discuss it, yeah.
And I think we all crave to get those answers. And I'm surprised at the magnitude of the number. It's, uh.
Yeah, I find it stunning. And it's one of the reasons, as soon as I got the memo, I made a request to the chairman to get this on the agenda.
And, and the request was a good request, and it was just that we couldn't get a meaningful response that quickly.
Well, I think one of the things.
We got it in motion.
Yeah, I think we need, I think it, it really drives, to me, it just raises a host of issues and problems that we are going to have to address. You couple that with the Mass DOT. And if you, if you don't mind, I, I, I attended, we had an MPO meeting. This is the, or this is the Advisory Board that makes decisions on transportation funding on the Cape. So the Cape Cod MPO met earlier this week. And I raised the question to the, as the Barnstable County Rep on the MPO, I, I brought it up again at our meeting. In fact, I've even raised questions with staff about this. It was on the tip. It was there. We saw it. We voted on it. We approved it. It was there as the Yarmouth Route 28 resurfacing project. That's what it was characterized as. And the dollar figure was probably about 21, 22 million dollars. So we've been carrying it on the tip for a while, but now it's sort of disappeared because the project itself has changed, because there are other issues, other aspects of it. DOT affirmed, and, you know, Jeff was one of the spectators, he, Jeff Colby attends all these meetings and listens in, even though he can't vote. He does listen in and take notes. So I, I, I made a, an appeal to the state officials to really, we, we want to see them. We know that we've talked about a meeting. We want to get an update. But I made it very clear to them that the delays are creating a real hardship for the town, and will drive, drive behind schedule yet again, you know, Yarmouth's Phase 1, and that we need to figure out a way as soon as possible to get this project back on track with the definitive schedule. I didn't get into the weeds about phasing and some of the other things that Bob and Jeff have talked to Mass DOT about, but I did make it very clear to the Mass DOT representatives that are there, where they have a serious problem. One of the things that was mentioned in the meeting that I, I caught my attention, and I know it caught Jeff's attention, is that they indicated that there are a number of Article 97 issues associated with the project. So clearly, they're doing a lot of planning and engineering work. And they had indicated to us that those issues, those land issues will require legislative action. Okay, so they flagged that. That's the first time I had ever heard that. So I had asked Jeff after the meeting to make sure that he reported back to Bob for the full complexity of, and the full flavor of the discussion. So we spent a fair amount of time discussing this. Pam Hasner from Mass DOT, she's the District 5 Rep. She was, and made it abundantly clear to me and all of the members of the MPO, because they're some multi, you know, member body, and you've got clearly all the key stakeholders from federal and state government at the table. She made very clear that this is still a priority, that it's very, very important. Now, so I was, I was pleased to hear that. She knows that we're, we're very, very concerned. Now, I'm just gonna segue, indulge me for a moment. I'm gonna segue into another discussion. With my other hat, I had a briefing and an update on the Canal Bridges project, because I wanted to find out, again, wearing my MPO hat, what's, what's happening with the, with that project? We've been assured that they'd be funded. The state said they had the funds for design. And so I was grilling the consultants who are heading up the design effort, you know, what's going on. And the reality is, that's been stalled as well. Well, so we're, 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 we're in, we're in, we're in some interesting company, let's say, for projects that are stalled. All right? So the two bridge projects, right now, you might hear pronouncements that this may be happening or that might be happening. But my assessment is that with the bridges, things have stalled there, too. And I think, quite frankly, while no one could give me details on it, I think a lot has to do with the situation that we're dealing with in terms of transitions with administrations right now. All right? Think about it. This administration is getting ready to leave. I've heard from other people that their top officials at Mass DOT that either aren't there, or they've been dusting off their resume. And people are hitting the exits right now. And that's, that's what, one of the things that we're up against. So the senior people, so we want to get on the phone and talk to senior people, right? Well, guess what? We may call, and for some of these folks, nobody's home. So we're in a, we're in a very awkward situation right now. So I just want you to be aware that oftentimes, when you're dealing with Mass DOT and there's an issue and delay, usually you can get somebody at a pretty high level, and working with your legislators, get some attentiveness to it. But we're gonna be extra challenged because some of the senior people in Mass DOT are not there anymore and are on their way out the door. For those that are there, several of them are on their way out the door. Right?
Yeah, and Waylon's clearly not gonna be there for us anymore.
Nope.
So we're in a very awkward situation. So.
You're gonna have a freshman rep either way.
So I'll continue to raise the issue in the various forums and the various bodies that I'm on, and I'll continue to do that. So, but you should just, I wanted to share those, that information with you, because I think it just adds some different perspective, some added color or background in terms of what we're up against.
Thank you, Mark. Consent agenda, um.
Right. Can I do one, one more very quick thing? On the historic agenda appeal, you know, we're gonna discuss it. Should we have CEDC come in? Because they were the ones who originally presented that, did, as part of that. I mean, if, if they're not in.
On the banners?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
And that's a question to Bob?
That's a question to Bob, yeah.
Yeah, at least invite their chairman or something.
What's the appeal period on that? Is it even?
I don't know. I have to check.
Is it even viable? Well, how long ago was that, Mark?
The, it was, it's over a month ago. I don't know.
You're right, you're right, Mike. It might.
I doubt, I doubt you, I doubt you'd be able to, I mean, if it's over, generally, I don't know of any appeal periods that are over 30 days, generally.
Yeah. It may have lapsed. That needs to be checked.
But we'll check and see if it's, it's, it's viable.
And if it's viable, we'll get CEDC, schedule them in here, talk about it, get it.
Okay.
Ready to roll.
Yeah. Before, before Mr. Chairman, we go to the consent agenda, one last thing to indulge me on, but the, the wastewater and the reason why the costs are important, because not only do we have to update the financial plan, but it's, we're, we're gonna be asked some tough questions. We are. You know, what happened? I can remember when I joined the board in 2017, Phase 1 was somewhere in the $125 million range. And then in a couple of years, we were in the $132 million range. And then shortly after that, we were in the $160 million range. So we're gonna have some folks in the community that are gonna wondering, you know, when, now that we're over 200 million, they're, we're all entitled to an explanation.
Of course.
Uh, in terms of what those cost increases can be attributed to.
I don't know all the answers, and I'm gonna be very curious to discover them. But I do remember when we were dealing with this tri-town solution, the consultants were telling us then that the costs were going up 3% to 5% a year. Because I remember in my brain, I was carrying about a 5% figure for each year that we were going through this process.
Yeah.
And that's why ultimately, when we weren't getting any positive response from the other two towns, I made a motion that we move forward on our own to try to contain these, these escalated, escalating costs. But I don't think any of us envisioned the kind of numbers we're hearing now.
No, I, I think, and again, I don't want to get too far astray here, but I think what we're gonna find out as we get briefed on this is that the five-year period that we, or the four-year period that we took to negotiate on DHY, that period is a lot more expensive to us than just the $5 million a year. I think we're gonna find out that.
No, I'm not talking 5 million. I'm talking 5%. They were saying 3 to 5%.
But the 5%, excuse me, the 5%.
5% on 160 million would be about 8 million a year.
Right. I think, I, I guess there's gonna be a lot of heads.
Throw, throw, throw 32 mil on top of that, it comes about 192 million. So it's still even more than that.
Not much more. No, I think the delays and our, our interest in doing the.
It's probably part. It's probably part of it, but I, I think there's gotta be more to it than that.
Oh, I don't disagree, I'm just saying that, that I think in retrospect, we will look back at that period of time and realize.
Wish we went forward.
And we will realize that we underestimated the cost of the delay of that period of time that we took. So that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Okay, I'm ready for the town administrator to bring us through the consent agenda.
Okay, we just have a couple of items that are holdover, that we have the revised CEDC committee charge. That there were so many revisions, that we said, well, why don't we bring this back for an official vote? So the charge is on there, and we also have the Steelworkers Highway Division contract and the Sanitation Division contract that just needs approval to sign. This has already been ratified by the board, but now we have gone to having the whole contract pulled together, and so it just needs a signature, and also in your red folder are the signature pages.
I move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? That's unanimous, and that brings us to town administrator updates.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I know it's late, I'll try to go quickly, but a couple of things I wanted to make sure the board was aware of. This past week, we conducted a meeting with the Clean Energy Center to discuss some of the issues related to the Solar Wolf customers that we have outstanding. And what we're working to do is attempting to put together some technical resources, hopefully, to help the customers through the difficult situation, and identify some possible relief there. And obviously, you know, it's too early to see how those programs may gel together, but I was encouraged to see the willingness on behalf of the state agency to identify potential solutions, work with the town. And you know, there's some people with partial installations, some people with no installations, a lot of people that are out a lot of money, and so there is some energy and discussion around those issues, and we'll keep the board very much apprised of what progress that we can make there. I want to mention that I'm very happy we've completed our first draft of the capital improvement program for the next six years. And we forwarded that to the capital committee for review, they're currently reviewing that right now. And this was a fundamental reworking of the entire apparatus surrounding capital planning for the town, going right down to the bare walls, work with each department. And I need to give special thanks to Bill Scott for his wonderful technical assistance throughout this process, updating completely all of the software. We have a new program that we're using that has the level of information that is supporting the capital plan and the financing of it, is like the town has never seen before. So I think you're gonna be very pleased with that, and it's gonna be in front of you as soon as we get through some of the capital committee review, it comes to the Board of Selectmen, so definitely look for that. I mentioned before, we're gonna meet with the Finance Committee tomorrow. We're gonna be talking to them about issues associated with the capital program, with the town meeting, and also begin our discussions for the FY '24 budget process. I've already been working to prepare my preliminary analysis of revenues that we're gonna start with the Finance Committee, and then we're gonna be working that into the Board of Selectmen's agenda during the month of October, at some point, to be able to kick off the whole budget process. We usually do that around November, but I want to kick it off in October, just give everyone more time. And I think we've got the data to support that, so we can do it. And I have a save the date for the board. October 28, 10:30 a.m., up at the Police Department for our police change of command ceremony, which will be followed by a very, very nice open house up at the Police Department. And I've been working with Chief Frederickson and prospective Chief Lennon.
What's the date and time again?
It's Friday, October 28, tentatively, our ceremony at 10:30 a.m., but we'll have that finalized, we'll be working on invitations and.
That's great.
It'll be a very nice, be a very nice day. Mike's gonna give a speech.
That'll be great.
I got the first line figured out.
What did you say?
What's that, what's that famous, something? Countryman, what's that famous speech?
Friends, Romans, countrymen.
Romans and countrymen, that's what I come up with so far.
Let me your ears.
I'll give them back to you when I'm done.
Not to praise Caesar.
Friends, Romans, and countrymen.
Is there anything else, Bob?
No, I'm all set, sorry.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, we stand adjourned.